All attendance, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Michael Pearson with the Seventh Day Adventist Church. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Pastor Pearson, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for the invitation. Lord God, we want to thank you for the mayor, the city council, and administrators, first responders, and all employees, for those here tonight. And we pause for a moment to ask for your blessing on the proceedings and on each person mentioned, that we might seek what is best and right, that we will make decisions that will be of the best for the city. We ask this in the one who is the first and the last, the beginning and the end. Amen.
Mr. Michael.
Thank you. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There were no changes to the published agenda, so I moved that we adopt it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Item five, under announcements. Council, we have a car seat inspection on Thursday, the 18th, from noon to 3:00 at City Hall. They do require to schedule appointments, and you can call the fire admin office. City 101, last week was the first one. We covered Parks and Police. And we had around 45 in attendance. This week, on Thursday, the 17th, from 5:30 to 8:00, we'll have the Public Works Department and the Fire Department. So we'd love you to join us here at City Hall. Kleiner Park Family Fun on Saturday, the 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00. And just want to make sure, I know you've started to get some emails about National Night Out. And so make sure you have that on your calendar. And I believe Chris will have a brief meeting for consent agenda business, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And we do have some upcoming city council joint meetings. On August 13th, at 3:00 p.m. with Ada County Highway District. If council members have agenda topics you would like considered, if you can get that to our council president, we can discuss that at our agenda setting meeting. Same with the joint meeting with West Ada School District on August 21st at 6:00 p.m. As well, Ada County Commissioners on September 17th at 3:30. So I have some topics that we kind of talked about today, but we're interested in what is on your mind. Anything further for announcements? Amen. Item six, Mr. Clerk, any signups?
Madam Mayor, there are no signups.
Okay. Seven under action items. We do have under item A, our public hearing for our C2BG program, and I'll turn this over to Crystal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the presentation from June 4th to remind everybody what was in the action plan. The actual plan is guided by the Consolidated Plan, or I'm sorry, the C2BG program is guided by the Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year plan where we go out into the community and we use citizen participation to assess the community and see what they really want to have happen over the next five years. The current plan runs from 2017 to 2021, and the goals identified were improving accessibility, enhancing homeownership opportunities, providing social services, stabilizing the rental gap, and then administration and fair housing. The action plan is, there's one for each year of the Consolidated Plan that tells the community how we're going to meet those goals throughout the year. This is the third year coming up for the current Consolidated Plan, and it will start October 1st, 2019, and run through September 30th, 2020. The public comment period started on May 31st and will end tonight after the public hearing. At the end of the year, then, there's also a CAEPER, which is the final report that reports on all of the accomplishments, and it's due in December. So these are the activities associated with the goals that we identified. To improve accessibility, we plan to do the East Third Street right-of-way improvements, as well as streetlight improvements near Meridian Middle and Meridian High School. For homeownership opportunities, then, we were going to fund the Homeownership Assistance Program. For social services, then, we had identified homelessness prevention, youth extended care scholarships, soar care coordination, and behavioral health crisis stabilization, and then, of course, administration and fair housing. So we did have one major change and then some, one public comment that we wanted to update you with. Unfortunately, we will not be able to fund the Pathways Community Crisis Center this year. They are, Pathways is a for-profit organization, and to receive the C2BG public service funds, then they have to be a nonprofit. So in the past, when they've needed to qualify for a service or for grants like this, then they've used our CND to qualify as the nonprofit, and then they're the fiscal agent. But C2BG require, would require them to be more like the full-on sub-recipient and treat Pathways as a contractor, which would mean they would have to go monitor them and everything else. And they're just not set up to do that. So we had to find a new way to reallocate the $13,500 that was originally allocated toward them. After speaking with the scoring committee, then, we decided to look at the top two ranked projects that did not receive their full funding, which would be the Ada County Housing Authority, which is the Homeownership Assistance Program. So we are going to increase that funding from $30,000 to $40,000, which will allow them to help one additional household. And then the Jesse Tree of Idaho is homelessness prevention, and we are increasing the funding from there from $21,000 to $24,500, which will allow them to help another five households. Final update is on public comment. Councilman Borton had asked a really good question about the default rates for our Homeownership Assistance Program. So when I was trying to compare what type of loans that we more than likely are providing, it was kind of hard to find the information, but the best that I could come up with, then FHA loans nationally, there's a 3.7 serious delinquency rate. And that was in 2018, which was like an all-time low for, well, not all-time, since 2011, all-time low. And were ours, then, there were no defaults from the beginning of the program, which was in 2008, the first time we did it. We've funded 35 households, and nobody has defaulted. So I think ACHA and NeighborWorks Boise have done a really good job of screening people and making sure they're getting the education that they need to be able to continue with the loans. So those were the only updates that I had to the previously presented plan. So again, tonight, then, it's the public hearing and the end of the public comment period. Next week, I'll make any changes to the action plan and submit that to you again, along with the resolution, so that you can approve that, and I can submit the action plan to HUD by the end of the month. So with that, I'll stand for comments.
Thank you, Crystal. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burns.
Crystal, awesome job. Great job.
Okay, if there's nothing further, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to testify? Mr. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, there is one sign in, and it looks like they're actually here for another project, and they did not indicate they wish to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Thank you. Council, this will be on next week's agenda for, with the resolution. And if there is no, nothing further, we could, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We close the public hearing on item 7A, the C2BG 2019 draft action plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. And we'll see this next week. Crystal, you've done a phenomenal job. I've appreciated the passion that you've put into it, but also going out and seeking further knowledge about the program and what some of the possibilities have been that we could be doing to improve our community outreach. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B is a final plat, continue from July 9th. This does request continuance to August 13th, and maybe I'll ask Bill if he can give us the reasons why.
Happy to, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So yeah, this is second or third continuance, I believe, for this particular final plat. And the issue really stems around some irrigation easements that run along the south boundary of the project. This was a topic of discussion when it was in front of this body and Planning and Zoning Commission. And so the applicants elected to continue to work on those issues, but in order to do that, they need to ask for the continuance, submit a revised plan, remove those, basically remove the lots along that south boundary from their first phase of development as they continue to work with the adjacent neighbors and staff on a resolution to those issues. But we hope to have some updated plans to bring forward a staff report that is consistent with that preliminary plat that was approved last year. So really, it's just, there's some issues, technical issues that have to be worked out. We can't seem to get there, so the easiest thing to do is just move those lots from the boundary, submit a revised plat, write a staff report consistent with the preliminary plat, and move forward. And that's what the applicant has requested. That's why they're requesting the continuance.
Council, any comments? Any concerns? Do I have a motion to continue?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burns.
I move that we continue H-2019-0064 to what date? August 13th, 2019.
I have a motion and a second to continue item B to August 13th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. Item C is received some comments by email. Is there anyone here for this item? It is not a public hearing. Typically, these are on our consent agenda, but the applicant did not get us comments before the published date of our consent agenda, so it landed in the action items. Council, I see that the applicant is in agreement with the staff report, and there's nothing further on this item. Did you have any questions?
Questions? Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 7C, H-2018-0067, consistent with the conditions in the staff report.
I have a motion and a second to approve H-2018-0067. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion to hearing. We are now in our public hearing section of our agenda. If there's anyone new here this evening, our process for public hearings is to first hear from staff who will present the application and any staff concerns. Then we'll hear from the developer or applicant. They have 15 minutes to present their application to the city council. After that, we do open it up for public hearing and public comments. There's a three-minute time limit, and there is a timer on the screen at the podium that will help you track your time. I will interrupt you when the timer goes off and ask you to summarize, if you haven't done so already. After public testimony, the applicant has an opportunity to summarize and answer any questions that came up during the testimony. And council will have an opportunity at that point to ask staff, applicant, or any of those that testified questions. There is a huge, a public record on each of these that councils had an opportunity to review before coming to the hearing tonight. And that's all considered in addition to what we hear this evening to render their decision. So with that, I will open this public hearing on item 7D for H-2018-0126 with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. First action item on the agenda this evening is the Rackham Sub, or land use application, is the Rackham subdivision. It's a preliminary plat. The site consists of 51.59 acres of land, and it's currently zoned CG in the city limits. This property was annexed in 1995 with a vision of a, basically a mall on the site. The applicant was before you approximately six months ago, went through that DA modification process, and tied a concept plan to this particular property. And that's not changing as part of this application at this point. I would also mention to council that the applicant is proposing, has submitted a DA modification that will be for, be before you in August to change some of the terms of that agreement. But again, as part of the preliminary plat, all they're doing is creating lots to sell off or create additional building pads, or consistent with their concept plan that was approved with that DA. The applicant is proposing to develop this project in three phases, as you can see here in the phasing plan. There's a Phase 1, a 2A, 2B, 2C, 2D, 2E, and a 3. Again, that's subject to change. As you know, sometimes applicants always have the best of intentions to develop their plans consistent with a concept plan. But as I just mentioned to you, things are changing quickly out there, and so it's paramount that they get this approved so they can adjust according to what's occurring on this particular property. When we were, when we were before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had not yet received ACHD's comments on this particular application. I am happy to report that ACHD did provide us a draft staff report, and that is included as part of your record. I've had a chance to review that document. Again, nothing glaring as far as any improvements. The applicant will be required to extend North Silverstone Way into the site and construct a mini roundabout, and then have a cross-access with the adjacent property to the south and tie it into Rackham Lane, which is currently stowed to this property. So again, consistent with the concept plan and the DA, and consistent with their traffic study that ACHD reviewed and approved. As far as landscape improvements for the development, the applicant's only required to construct the landscape buffers along the extension of the Collector Road, which is that mini roundabout. And there is a requirement for a 50-foot-wide landscape buffer along ITD Right-of-Way or Interstate I-84. Staff did receive comments from ITD on this particular application. Some of the things they were asking for were off-site improvements to some of the way the interchange functions. Because this is just a plat, and we're already annexed and zoned, we have limited purview as to what we can require as part of that process. But as I mentioned to council, we do have a development agreement coming before you, modification. That may be the appropriate time to talk about some of those mitigations. I know the applicant is also in contact with ITD and having some conversations with them as well. So hopefully, we can vent those out a little bit more as we go through that DA process. But it's important to note that there are some impacts to the transportation system out there. So the commission did recommend approval of this particular project. Jeff Wardle spoke in favor. And then as far as any key items of discussion or changes to the staff report, outstanding issues, there aren't any for you this evening. It's a fairly clean application. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and let you know that we are, both the commission and staff, are recommending approval.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions? I see applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Jeff Wardle. My address is 251 East Front Boise, here on behalf of the applicant tonight. We are in agreement with what Bill outlined for you, and I'm going to just give you a brief update on where we were, where we are, and why we'll be back in front of you shortly. The project is not changing. As we've gone through the design and development process of it, it's become apparent that there are certain phasing considerations that, based upon infrastructure, and when we're going to extend infrastructure, makes sense to do at different times. So as Bill indicated, and as we talked about previously, the development agreement came in for a mixed-use commercial project based upon the 1995 zoning and annexation. That was originally contemplating a large retail center with over 700,000 square feet of retail. That included the Eagle Commons property, which is the Norco property and the related developments being brought forward by Jim Kissler to the south. The site plan has not changed. The type of improvements that we're talking about has not changed. What we have done as we have gone forward with the preliminary plat is identifying the fact that as we deal with certain elements, that phasing, as we initially contemplated, probably isn't consistent with what we actually need to build and proceed. As we presented to you, and as you may know, we are in for a building permit on this building right here, which is ICCU's main building. In this, the first two phases, we are contemplating three office buildings with a mixture of retail, hospitality, entertainment here, and the possibility of medical office down here. We will be back with respect to Phase 3, which is the future development of that southeast quadrant. As indicated, the preliminary plat proposes 20 lots on one block with private access drives. We have, are working on an agreement with Kissler to the south to address the concerns raised by ACHD and the city to ensure that we have connectivity to the public between the public roads that are Silverstone to the east and Rackham Way to the west. That will be accomplished with a private access drive and an easement between these two properties. Additionally, we have addressed fire concern with the acquisition of property over here to permit an emergency access out to Rolling Hills, as well as emergency access through the eastern portion here. The preliminary plat that's before you, we believe, is fully compliant with the development agreement and the other requirements of your code. As indicated, these parcels to the east and the southeast quadrant are being platted at this time, but we will have to come back to you with the development plan for those, and we will at that point in time. Now, the phasing plan that you previously approved in the development agreement is outlined by Bill. We have submitted. We will be making an amendment, and I'm going to show you why. This is the development plan that was originally contemplated. Because of infrastructure, we had contemplated doing this in four phases. Realistically, as we start with Phase 1, the ICCU building, these other elements internally, we're going to have to address access. We're going to have to address utilities, extension of water and sewer. And so that then leads to the phasing and the sequencing of certain commercial improvements. And so in the staff report, there was discussion as well about water and how we were going to address water. And so HOROCs has been working with your Public Works Department. If we end up doing all of the infrastructure in the first two phases, we believe that that adequately addresses the looping of the water. Because if we do it in the first two phases, we will go ahead and loop out to the water facility that's adjacent to the interstate. If we end up not doing this extension initially, then we'll just loop it through this portion as part of Phase 2. So we think that that issue has been addressed. We believe that we've also addressed the issues with respect to emergency access with the Fire Department, and ITD and ACHD's requirements are what were expected. Now, the phasing that we talked about is just, ICCU is Phase 1. The other commercial elements of Phase 2, we just need some flexibility as for staging, timing, and where we go forward. But that becomes important because you will see that between this plan, none of the buildings change, and the plan that you will see in a month or so just incorporates this phasing plan with these structures. So we're in agreement with the conditions of approval. We recognize that there's still obviously design work to do, because this is just a preliminary plat. But the preliminary plat complies with the provisions of the Meridian Unified Development Code, and we stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this time? Mr. Cavanagh?
Mr. Wardle, thanks for being here. Can you jump back to that slide that shows the water?
Sure.
I guess it was a concern that was raised from staff. I appreciate you addressing it. I don't know if this slide was able to be shared with staff before the meeting.
Well, I believe that...
Councilman Cavanagh, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I've been talking to their engineer, Rob Sundarlich, at HOROCs, and we were going over exactly what this exhibit should show and say, and I'm satisfied with it.
Madam Mayor.
Additional question? Mr. Wardle, I don't, quite frankly, I don't have any issues with your preliminary plat at all. I think it's fine. My question for you is, there's some comments again in the staff report about the ability for our Fire Department to be able to serve this development with a ladder truck, and there being some potential delays. And I guess, from the applicant's perspective, is that a concern of yours? And I guess, I'm trying to figure out the best way that we can come to some type of a conclusion to get that piece addressed.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, I obviously have to defer to your Fire Department. Obviously, this is not the first six-story building that we have built within a mile of this site. We're comfortable with the sequencing of things. We're comfortable with the service times that they indicate, as well as the contribution that the significant impact fees will add to this, that we'll be able to address all that. And obviously, it's all going to be built to code and sprinkled, so.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Chief, anything you want to add?
Madam Mayor, council, Councilman Cavanagh, thanks for the question. As you know, we put that in our, in our staff report. This is kind of a mid-rise building, that six-story. When we get into seven above, we're looking at high-rise. We always put in our staff report, as we continue to build vertically throughout our city, right now, we have one ladder truck to cover 56 square miles. And so we want to make sure that there's just an awareness on all of our parts that at some point, probably in our city, a second ladder truck's going to be needed based on the call volume and the growth vertically.
And, Madam Mayor, I was trying to do some of the quick math with square footage with new impact fees, kind of what that would generate, so we would have an idea. But I think it's important for council to note, as these great developments come in and bring a bunch of commercial with them, as they go vertically, it is going to increase our need for additional ladder trucks, which development like this, through impact fees pay for. We just need to make sure that's on our radar.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer?
Did something change? I thought it was going to be a five-story.
No, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, there are no buildings in this project that are going to be taller than five stories.
Okay.
Okay.
And certainly, as the applications come into our planning department and the pre-app with all of our departments around the table, these are the discussions they have. And certainly, is a discussion that council is considering as you consider the annexation and entitlements for these developments. So, anything further? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wardle? Okay, this is our public testimony section. Mr. Clerk, do we have signups?
Madam Mayor, there are no signups.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimonies that's in our audience tonight? You filled the room just for this awesome project. Nope. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Nobody interested in testifying. I move that we close the public hearing on item 7D, H-2018-0126.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 7D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh?
We approve item 7D, H-2018-0126, as presented, and include all staff and applicant testimony.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 7D. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton? Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. Item 7E is a continued public hearing on H-2019-0006. I will note that this public hearing was continued on three items. One is revised plat that, I understand, has been received. Two was a plan on the something lateral. What was the lateral?
Carnes.
Carnes, lateral. And the third one was to talk about the safety improvements on Dunwoody. So I will turn this over to staff at this point.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I apologize, if I could just briefly interrupt. On June 25th, I wasn't here, but following that meeting, I was able to review all the materials, review the P&amp;Z minutes, and also watch the complete video of that hearing, so I'm fully up to speed on what's transpired, had a chance to go through all the materials, so I feel comfortable participating in today's hearing as well.
Thank you, we appreciate that, Mr. Borton. And, so the conversation tonight for this continued public hearing are on those three items. We have a lengthy or a good public record up to this point, as Mr. Borton just talked about. So, Mr. Parsons?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think you did a great job, Mayor, kinda laying the framework for what we're discussing this evening. So staff did prepare memo, we did receive those updates yesterday afternoon, and with those came a memo that kinda summarized the items that were received, along with some of these written information that the applicant provided to you, as far as how those deliberations went with the neighbors, and what steps they took in order to address those three items. So I would mention to you that this was the plat that was before the city council on the 25th. As you recall, there were some changes from the Planning and Zoning Commission on a revised plat that did not happen between that month's timeframe, and so this body was picked up on that and asked that they make those changes. Now, I will mention to you that in my memo, I did err a little bit, I went back and looked at the submitted plans today, and I would let you know that the hearing outline that I prepared for you this evening does, and the plans that the applicant showed, did show a common lot and the sidewalks along Guinness Street as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I do have that in the slide here. But I also left up some of the things that they required, so if I can go through... It looks like my slideshow's gone. So essentially, let's see if I had the right slides here for you. Essentially, the applicant did provide, did extend the road to align with Shandy, and then they also extended the common lot along the south boundary of West Guinness Street, included the sidewalks. So staff has received that, that is also included as part of the record. The other issue was the safety concerns raised on Dunwoody Court. And if you recall, the applicant was to go back and work with the neighbors and see if they could come up with a plan, and I remember Councilman Burnt specifically said, "We have a lot of smart people in the room, they can come back with a solution." So looking through the record and meeting with the applicant and the deans, it sounds like the residents, the terms weren't met, the residents want a complete street, they want Dunwoody Court built to a complete street standard, which means curb gutter sidewalk on both sides of the road. As we mentioned to you at the last meeting, there is the right of way to do that, but in order to facilitate that, that requires drainage, that requires almost a rebuild of the road to do that, which is a significant cost. In receiving an email from ACHD, it appears that their standards for this particular road meets, the amount of traffic that would be on this road meets their warrants, so there's not traffic that would require those types of improvements. But there are standards that they can do to improve the safety on the roadway. ACHD, Christie Little in particular, sent an email, which was included as part of your packet, that explained that the applicant could stripe four-foot walkways on either side of the road, and then stripe to travel lanes, so you'd have essentially a striped pathway on each side of the road, or the applicant has the option of doing all of it on one side of the road, or an eight-foot pathway, and still stripe to travel lanes, and then put no parking signs along both sides of the street. So there shouldn't be any parking on this particular roadway. And then the applicant's also gone a step further, and also asked to install a few streetlights to improve some visibility in the area, one being at the intersection, one around the corner, and then one at the entrance as you exit out of this subdivision into Dunwoody Court. So they're putting lights in the appropriate places, as far as staff is concerned. So, again, as far as a safety concern, that was something that was very important to this body. Again, I realize that the neighbors and the applicant may not have come to terms, but according to ACHD's standards, if these things are met, they're meeting their policies. And the last item was the improvements related to the carns. As we talked about at the last meeting, staff was concerned that a portion of those, of that waterway would be an easement versus a common lot. And I can, if you can follow my cursor here, so originally, as the current lateral is piped and within the existing Dunwoody subdivision along this boundary here, which is Lot 19, Block 1, and then it terminates, there's a gate here, and then it becomes an open dish that runs through the property. In discussions with the applicant, they're going to, from where that head gate is, they're gonna pipe along the south side of this private street here, and then terminate at the west, the east boundary of this property, and then head south across three of the lots, or excuse me, four of the lots, and then tie into where it's piped within the Bristol Heights subdivision. So, some of this waterway is already piped, the applicant's gonna pipe the remainder that falls within the boundary of their project. They met with the current lateral to discuss those improvements. Now, I would mention to council that it's, at this time, it's not realistic for the applicant to get plan approval at the preliminary plat stage. Typically, as you go through the final plats, the applicant has to provide their irrigation plans, those get sent to the lateral association, they approve the plans, and then as they come in for their signature on the plat, the applicant has to provide a written letter from the irrigation district that they've prepared, built the plans as proposed and approved by the lateral association. So, those negotiations, those talks have happened. Now, I did receive an email, and you did too, from Mr. Mark Miller. He was concerned that he wouldn't have access to his water, and any improvements to that waterway may impede the use of his irrigation system. And so I informed him, and I sent him these plans, and had him look them over, and he wants to make it clear that anything that happens, that the applicant enters into a license agreement with him, because the lateral will impact his property, which is right in this location here. There will be a 15-foot easement, and that's where some of those improvements will occur. So, they're gonna have to work with that private property owner, and make sure whatever improvements they do to that irrigation facility, that he can hook into it, and his current system will remain and work as it currently works today. So I told him that I would share that with you, and hopefully you've had a chance to see his written testimony. So, those are the three items that we're opening up for discussion. I would let the council know that we did receive additional written testimony on this particular application, and that's included as part of the public record as well. So we had nine residents, again, speaking to these three items. So with that, again, everything's been addressed per staff's purview, we're comfortable with it, but I'll just stand for questions and open it up for public testimony.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for staff at this point? Miss the applicant here. Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
You bet. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, representing the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be back, and we have, I believe, addressed the items that, as Bill has mentioned, appreciate his summary. I thought it might be helpful just to kinda make sure we're still on the same page, to give just a brief summary of how we got here, how we got to the three items that needed to be addressed, and then ultimately, what we think are the items that council should be looking at and considering in terms of a motion. So again, a small infill development, unique, with all of the stub connections that we've talked about in the past, 44 homes, about half the density that could be allowed per the current comp plan designation. Again, part of the Dunwoody subdivision, the CCNRs provide notice that this would take access off of Dunwoody Court. As we went through the process, there was the discussion about cut-through traffic, which is why we ended up with the gated proposal. Again, the larger block does not include a collector roadway network, everyone who's going to be accessing these local roads are gonna be using them in order to get out to the arterials. There's not amenities that are accessible from the internal block itself. That was why ACHD and P&amp;Z recommended no connection at Guinness to Stafford, and that was kind of the initial issue that had to be resolved through this process. So again, as Bill mentioned, there were the three items that were brought up for follow-up at this meeting. Start with carns, I think Bill's description is accurate. We have been back to them with, and they have approved the current plans. That conversation has been ongoing for months, they reviewed a preliminary set of plans and approved it back in February. They have indicated that we could represent to you that those plans are approved. It's my understanding that a carns board representative should be here tonight to confirm that. With regard to Mr. Miller's property, there will be no interference, we will not be on his property, and other than to provide a connection to the point where he currently takes irrigation. So we will be within the carns lateral easement, but we will provide a connection point, so we will not interfere with his water. As Bill mentioned, it's typical of all plats, that those plans would be finalized with construction plans in connection with the final plat, that will be done in the normal course, as is standard. And that, we're more than happy to see that as a condition of the final approval, because that's standard operating procedure. With regard to the plats, again, those have been submitted. The preliminary plat does, as Bill mentioned, include the buffer. I pointed that out here, because I thought that he maybe missed it, but he caught it on this round, so that is there. The north-south connection to Shandy, if council recall, that was an item that was up for discussion, and that's something that we would like to continue as part of the conversation tonight in connection with your ultimate motion. The revised pre-plat, as Bill mentioned, this is where the buffer lot is located that staff had requested. And then the site plan illustrates how that north-south connection would work. Again, that's something we're asking the council to revisit, for a number of reasons, including the fact that we believe that it will not be heavily used, we believe it's not warranted, that folks will likely go out through the Dunwoody subdivision. And then in addition to that, I just wanted to point out that there had been a number of conversations about whether we had pushed back the eastern gate, as had been recommended by P&amp;Z, and you can see where it is located now, is this bulb out area here at the mouth of the subdivision. Again, with that north-south connection, and this is just a reminder of where we were, there is no block length issue to require the north-south connection. Just as a reminder, the emergency connections will be at Shandy and Shenden, and there will also be that pathway that'll support an emergency connection. And again, our traffic engineer's opinion is only 5% of this site traffic will actually use it, if it is ever required. Okay, so now to the Dunwoody question and the safety. And I want to talk about something that seemed to be an assumption on the part of several, which was at the last hearing, which is that Dunwoody Court is inherently unsafe. It is not inherently unsafe, it meets current ACHD standards, and I wanted to walk you through that to make sure that everyone was clear on that. So this table is from the ACHD Policy Manual, Section 7600. This shows the local street requirements for the various types of local streets that are permitted within ACHD's jurisdiction. This project, or the Dunwoody Court, is what ACHD refers to as a standard rural street section. The width, per ACHD standards, is 30 feet with an eight-foot drainage swale. That, the 30-foot surface is exactly what is at Dunwoody Court. Now, I want to point you to the sidewalk requirements for ACHD for standard rural section. The standard is that there would not be a sidewalk. The standard is that there would be four feet of pavement on each side striped for non-motorized travel. So let's, I just want to be clear about this, Dunwoody Court is not an aberration, Dunwoody Court satisfies current ACHD standards 30 years after it was built. And that is why, when ACHD reviewed this, again, they said there are no improvements required on Dunwoody Court. So Bill described the communication that ACHD had provided. Again, it meets ACHD standards, but one thing, and Councilmember Burnt, I appreciated your suggestion at the last hearing of looking at things like an extruded curb. Unfortunately, that's not something that ACHD will allow on a local street. They did, as Bill mentioned, reiterated that striping would be the treatment that they would allow, and they clarified that they would allow either two four-foot paths on either side, or what we think would probably be more appropriate would be an eight-foot path on the south side. So that kinda sets you up, so you have a little bit of context for what occurred in the meeting with the Dunwoody residents, and at this point, I'd ask Mr. Conger to come and describe how that went, and kinda provide some insight for the council, as I was unfortunately not able to attend. So, I turn it over to Mr. Conger, and then I'll wrap up.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Can I ask Heath one quick question?
You bet.
To the earlier comment on, sorry to cut you off, Jim, on the sidewalks, if this application had come into the city along with Dunwoody Court as one project, what sidewalks would be required on Dunwoody?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, the warrant for the different types of street sections is actually based on the size of the lots, and so, based on the chart that I showed a few minutes ago, these lots are large enough that it could have qualified under the rural street section. Now, rural street sections aren't typically recommended in this type of an area, but it would have met the size requirements there. Beyond that, I wouldn't be able to hypothesize as to what ACHD would require.
And if Justin is here from ACHD, we can ask that question when it comes up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Conger, 4824 West Fairview Avenue. I will run through real quick, the, as Heath indicated, the Dunwoody, I call it the Dunwoody Court Safety Collaboration, which, the meeting that was held. We believe that was the direction of city council, was to meet with the owners along Dunwoody Court and collaborate with all parties that lived in, along Dunwoody Court, to discuss potential mitigations of the pedestrian safety as the only end goal for that, for those discussions. Prior to the neighborhood meeting, though, however, I did schedule meetings and other discussions with ACHD, because we needed to understand whatever mitigations that would come up with, for Dunwoody Court, would obviously have to be approved by ACHD. At that point, we were actually pushing for the raised curb, and that's where it came very quickly, and they have a fairly new policy, actually, against raised curbs in local streets, is, obviously, if we step back and think about it, you wouldn't be able to sweep or clean up debris or do anything behind that raised curb. ACHD took that opportunity, however, because of my request for the meeting and everything, to go back and review the original Dunwoody approvals, which is where we all got the education of the rural street section, and how it was then, and how it is actually basically the same today. But what came out of that approval is a lot of things, a lot of things appear to be missing. So, the Dunwoody Court originally had an approval for, it was to be no parking signs on both sides, and the parking obviously restricted full length of the roadway. The existing roadway, which the deans do remember, originally had striped, so the way the policy is, is you can do a four-foot striped pedestrian path, as Heath just showed you a second ago. ACHD does have it unwritten, but it is allowable to do a more meaningful, you can do an eight-foot striped pathway on one side, which in this case, the south side actually doesn't have conflicts with driveways in their community park, and actual their tennis court is on that south side, which might make more sense than two four-footers. ACHD also documented, there was no room for sidewalks in that 50-foot right-of-way, as you could see with the, that eight-foot drainage swale on each side, as in the policy, is a pre-calculated hydraulic engineering function that requires those swales to be there. Those swales are for the Dunwoody street drainage, and they also get used by the homeowners, and we were actually told by several of the homeowners, they still flood irrigate, and those swales could not disappear. That kinda buttons up the ACHD portion prior to our collaboration meeting, which was held with the HOA. Again, topic of Dunwoody Court safety. So moving into that, the group, you know, our groups met with their groups, they indicated Mr. Tippett, who I'm sure will speak today, definitely a professional, would be the spokesman for the HOA. Myself, along with Ms. Myself, along with Mr. and Mrs. Dean, were available to speak on behalf of the development, so we weren't restricted on making decisions. I opened it up, kind of starting the foundation with kind of going through the recent findings with ACHD and the Dunwoody Court's missing improvements, that maybe that's portion of the issue they're seeing today, as well as discussing additional safety items like streetlights and a few other items that we'll get into. At that point, the HOA-appointed spokesman identified that the Dunwoody homeowners held a previous meeting and approved a prepared statement for us, and I'm going to paraphrase it, that Dunwoody homeowners would not accept anything less than a complete new roadway to include curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and storm drainage, and the homeowners would not provide any talent, material, or funds regarding any of the safety mitigation. So that was our collaboration meeting. And just to touch base why we call that a complete road rebuild. Anytime a roadway is built with drain swales, it never had engineering slopes to it. So when you have drain swales, you actually run roads as flat as possible because you want the crown of the road to take the water into that swale. You don't slope them a bunch, or your swale ends up with all the water at one end. You actually want the water in the swales, you know, periodically throughout the roadway. So if you were to go rebuild this roadway, it would be a complete road rebuild, asphalt, everything. It would not be just slapping curbs up to the existing asphalt. I, after that statement, I continued explaining our thoughts to provide the following safety items: three streetlights on Dunwoody, provide and install all the missing no parking signs along both sides of Dunwoody Court. I install approved striping, and I believe to create an eight-foot walking path, which is a more sizable pathway on the side, on the south side of the Dunwoody Court. At this point, the Dunwoody HOA spokesman reiterated that they had an HOA-approved motion that would not accept anything less than a full road rebuild of the Dunwoody Court. That was kind of the final statement, and that meeting definitely came to an end for our collaboration. So we came back to our group, so re-listened to the City Council hearing that took us on our journey. We went back to ACHD's position and all their letters that ultimately got in your file, and we're offering the following improvements. Three streetlights on Dunwoody, as we originally promised the neighbors, provide and install all the no parking, and again, we are approximately 2,200-foot a road, which a mile is 5,280 feet, so a little under a half a mile of, that's a lot of no parking signs, on both sides of Dunwoody Court. Install an ACHD-approved stripe to create an eight-foot walking path. I think we would have some of our pedestrians walking too, so we would love to weigh in on the two fours versus the one eights. We believe the one eight would give the drive lane as it is and give a very buffering eight foot. So we would lobby hard for one eight-foot walking path that ACHD would approve on Dunwoody Court, per the policy. And within ACHD right-of-way, we would like to go in and at our nickel and remove all, any vegetation that's just in sight, you know, causing line of sight issues. There's a few of those, there's not many, but there is actually probably a handful. These are significant improvements. They aren't small, and we would place these conditions on our project, as Heath will wrap up the presentation with, and put those as conditions of our approval. And I'll turn it back over to Heath, or further clarify any points that I may have confused somebody with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, and I'll finish up. Jim, I think addressed this, but one of the questions that has come up is can we just slap a sidewalk on there and be done? As Jim mentioned, there are significant engineering issues with doing that. There's also spacing issues. If you put a sidewalk in there and it's five feet wide, then you don't have an eight-foot drainage swale any longer. You don't have something that can accommodate the drainage as it was originally designed and as ACHD's policy requires at eight feet. So to wrap up on Dunwoody, there is not an ACHD policy basis for a sidewalk-road rebuild. If there were, it would be a huge financial requirement. It would not have a rational nexus or rough proportionality to the impacts of this project. A 44-lot subdivision doesn't generate this need and does not justify this expense. Trip counts even at full build-out will be very low, at about 14% of capacity. You'd have to quadruple the homes. You'd have to come in with a comprehensive plan amendment to allow for greater density in order to approach anything that would justify that type of expense.
You need to just, you need to summarize.
Madam Mayor, I know you'd raised some questions about Kingsbridge last time. I will just offer that we believe that those are not similar situations. You have, in Kingsbridge, it's 76 acres and 130 lots and multiple stubs for future connections. In this case, 30 acres with 44 lots and no future connections. So in other words, twice the sidewalk for a third of the homes and no future connections.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
And Madam Mayor, I'll just leave you with this. This is the summary that I had mentioned with the proposed modifications to the P&amp;Z staff report. And to, as, to make it convenient for the council, I have these in hard copy for you, and I'll provide those to all of you and to the clerk.
Give it to Mr. Clerk. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Burnt.
I have a question for Justin, if not.
Yes. Good evening, Justin. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Justin Lucas. I'm here tonight representing the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adams Street in Garden City, Idaho.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Justin, thank you for joining us this evening. You squeaked in right at the most opportune time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Speak to us in regard to a rural street versus a local street, and is the raised curb that we spoke about that's not applicable to local streets, is it applicable to a rural street?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burt, ACHD has various street standards. Those standards have changed over time also, and so our code has not been stagnant over time. So when you're speaking about a rural street versus a local street, those standards do exist in our code now. They may have been different back when Dunwoody Court or street was built. But in general, a rural street is typically approved in a subdivision that has larger lots. The developer comes in and proposes a curbless cross-section, much like what is on Dunwoody Court. And for the fit and feel of the subdivision, they don't propose a sidewalk. As was mentioned, and in Christie's letter, which I believe you have, there was a pedestrian facility designated on Dunwoody Court when it was originally approved. It's the pathway. And that, although it may seem odd, because it's different than most streets in Meridian, it's actually not atypical to have pedestrians and bicyclists operating within a street with the volumes of Dunwoody Court.
Follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
So what you're saying is that even in a rural street, you would not recommend the raised?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilman Burt, to speak specifically to the raised curb, ACHD has quite a bit of experience with these ribbon curbs or these raised curbs. We've used them as interim measures on larger streets. If you've ever driven down, like Five Mile, Maple Grove, there's some segments throughout the county. Typically, it's used on much higher-volume streets where we're putting them in as a safety measure to really clearly delineate the pedestrian space from the vehicular space. They're not typical at all on local or rural streets. I can't, off the top of my head, can I say that there's not one out there? No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, though. I don't think there's a lot of applications where we've used that. And what we found, as we've installed quite a bit of this, I think with good intentions, we have found that there's quite a bit of maintenance issues associated with these spaces behind the curb. Our street sweepers are unable to access that area, so these spaces will often fill up with debris and other things that, you know, are not, you know, not desirable. Snow removal and other things like that, when we're plowing, if indeed we were to plow this Dunwoody, which is not likely, unless it was a major event. But if we were plowing or doing other maintenance activities related to that, we can't get behind those curbs, and so all of the snow ends up in that area. And so there's, and through all this, internally, ACHD has determined that these are not a desirable treatment, and we are not looking to install more of them in the county unless it's really a special circumstance where we have a clear need to do so. And as we looked at this, we did not determine that this was that special circumstance.
Mr. Borton, did you have your question answered?
Somewhat. I don't know if, Madam Mayor, I'll ask it to you because you're up here. If the Dunwoody Court had come in with this as a singular application, what would have been the requirements for sidewalks, if any?
Yeah. That's a hypothetical question, Counsel, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton. I don't know. It really depends on what the developer would be proposing at that time. It's not typical within the city of Meridian and with current development codes and the development pattern to have a street without a sidewalk. I mean, I think that's a blanket statement I could make. That being said, there are times when subdivisions come in and request not to include sidewalks for various reasons. As I stated earlier, usually it's a rural-type street, it's a fit-and-feel issue. In this instance, I, it's hard to say exactly what would be approved. That would go through the public hearing process, it would be discussed by ACHD, it would be discussed by the council. Certainly, that's not the situation we're in, in this instance.
That was a perfect non-answer.
Well said. I get it. I understand.
I guess so, it's not hypothetical because it's happening. You're, you have a county sub that were, that was built as a rural road. It's turning urban because it is now connecting to a higher density, even though it's a low-density development. So it's hard to accept an answer like that when it's playing out in front of you. So I think this council, because we don't have that road authority, is struggling to find that answer as to what is reasonable to expect to keep this a safe roadway for cars and pedestrians and bicycles and all modes. And we can't answer that, so we need you to answer that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have the analysis before you that was performed by ACHD's technical staff. You know, the word "safety" is, is, I think, it's everyone's goal. And the question of whether a road is safe or not, or whether a pedestrian or bicyclist is safe or not, the professional and technical staff at ACHD examine each situation in context and provide a determination on what we believe is reasonable. In this instance, ACHD, remember, only officially weighed in on what we're able to weigh in on in this case. ACHD is unable to require off-site improvements. It's not something that we, by statute, have the ability to do. But we did examine this situation at the request of the developer, and there was quite a bit of back and forth. I think that's been discussed at length tonight. And so I guess my answer to that question is, we believe that the, as stated in Christie's letter, we believe that what was originally required on Dunwoody, if implemented, seems to work for this situation. Due to the context, the densities prescribed, and the amount of proposed use that we see in this area.
So because you can't ask for whatever you're suggesting, if you were a city road department within the city realm, would you be asking for something different?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't think I can answer that question. ACHD is not a city road department. We work in partnership with you. We work in these situations as openly and as transparently as we can. The issue of what can be required of a development in an off-site situation is not solely an ACHD issue. That is a land use issue also. So this isn't simply whether ACHD were existence, were in existence or not. I think that's something that the city has to consider as you consider this application.
And I probably agree with you. I guess in this situation, ACHD is not that perfect model, because it leaves a gap of Okay, any further questions for Justin?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, members of council, on your desktop is the sign-in dashboard. You'll see that 18 people have signed in, six indicate they wish to testify, and first is Candace McHugh.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please list your name, give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Candace McHugh. I'm actually an attorney representing Mark Miller, and he is a resident at, in Dunwoody Court. My office is located at 380 South Fourth Street in Boise, Idaho. His address is 1906 East Dunwoody. And I appreciate the Madam Mayor and council. It's obvious that you're giving this a lot of thought, and this is kind of a bit of a little troubling subdivision that's been proposed. But for my particular client, there are two things that I believe were actually required as conditions to be met in order to go forward with the subdivision, neither of which have been actually met. First of all, Mr. Miller has not resolved the issues relative to the Karnes lateral. I understand that Mr. Heath said tonight that they would not be using his property. But my client does, in fact, if you look at what has been proposed, there are some admissions that while subtle are material. In that, you'll notice that there is a question as to whether or not Mr. Miller will have access to irrigation water. They say they will have a plumbing and a functional diversion for Mr. Tippett's, but not for Mr. Miller. And while they say they won't be using my client's property, I'm asking that that actually be a condition of approval, and that they, in fact, make it so it's functional for Mr. Miller on the lateral. Secondly, if you look at their proposal and the letter that's included, another recommendation, or actually another condition, it wasn't a recommendation, I believe it was a requirement, is to move the gate, that is the entrance way, to the proposed subdivision. And they proposed that that be held off, or that we have the final location determined at the final plat. I ask that that be made a condition of approval at the very least, so that it does not block access to the ability for my client and the other homeowners who use the Karnes lateral to access the regular customary easement that they've always had in order to access their back lots. Right now, if you look at what has been submitted, again, it's a subtle admission, but it is material. They are only providing access to the lateral manager, but my client, along with the other three homeowners, actually need to be, have that easement and access as well, and not just the Karnes lateral, because we have to have the easement and access so that we can actually irrigate our properties. Finally, the, some minor changes to the proposed plat would actually assuage some of the issues that are here. And I think one of the key things is that, for the council to keep in mind, is those minor changes for the plat, for example, where roads are located, where the gate is located, the impact to the actual lateral and access to the irrigation waters, has a minor impact upon the subdivision, but a major impact to my client in particular and to the Dunwoody Court. and to the Dunwoody Court people as a whole. So for those reasons, that's what I'd like to say. Mr. Miller, at this point, even with the updated, the updated plat, still opposes, as it's currently presented, without the conditions he specifically requested and want to make sure and confirm that he did in fact get the email to all of you.
Yes, he did.
So that was a quick three minutes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
This goes by fast.
Yes, it does. And I can talk fast.
Your, your client's request for, for access, I think is an interesting point. Is access to your client meaning ability to get access again to his property? Or is he looking for, for gate access? Is he looking to have the gate relocated so that he doesn't have to go through it? What is your client really requesting?
Well, frankly, we'd request no gate and we'd request a relocation of the entrance of the subdivision, which would actually impact Dunwoody Court, Dunwoody Court the least. But if that is not reasonable, we would like to have the gate moved back far enough to the east where the back portion of my client's property could be accessed without having to go through the gate so that he can access freely any water that he might need to do as well as his back lot, which he could develop in the future or continue to use as he has with his barn and stuff.
Thank you.
You looked puzzled. Did I not answer your question properly? I don't have...
I'm trying to understand how he's having access to his property...
Right now?
How he's permitted to have access to his property when it's his property that he's on.
Oh, right. Okay, good point. Thank you. The, if you look at the proposal on the...
You can use the mouse.
Oh, there we go.
Chris?
I should be smarter than that. Okay, if you look to the, where the entrance of the subdivision comes in, you'll see the Miller property.
Yep.
He uses that right now. That's a, a road that he uses regularly to access the back property and he has a barn and he accesses the lateral. And I believe some of the other property owners also access that because that's where you'd get your water. It's also the, the road that would normally have been accessed for the back lot for anybody if he were to develop that property. So that's what he's, that he's always been using and accessing. So if a gate is placed in that road, which has never been there, it impacts his access and his, his ability to use the property, I guess.
But, sorry. Chris, am I able to control the screen? I know we used to be able to do that. I don't know if we're able to do it anymore.
I don't believe so. Mr. Parsons can...
I guess, sorry, Madam Mayor. My question is, where the, the yellow says Miller property?
Mm-hmm.
That's his property, Mr. Miller's property, right? And he's able to be on that property. So is it a convenience that he's just wanting to get, wanting to drive over to this location as opposed to walk or use a razor on his farmland? I mean, is that really the drugs of what we're getting to?
I see. Thank you. Okay, so if you look at the Miller property, his, the back line of his property abuts the subdivision, the proposed subdivision right here, and he has a barn that's here and farm equipment has always used this access to farm the property that's currently, you know, not developed as well as Mr. Miller's back lot. And without the ability to use this and access, he will no longer be able to get any kind of equipment back to his back lot. He won't be able to get, if the, if the, if the gate is not placed far back and, back far enough, he won't be able to continue to use it as he has in the past. Right now, you know, his property's here and then the next property is, you know, here and then the next property here. There's no roads. There's no, there's, this is landscaped yards. He uses this to access his back lot. Does that answer your question?
It, it provides greater clarification. I still, I really am struggling to see how, where the gate is located, it's keeping Mr. Miller from accessing his property. I, I, I see it that it may be not his preferred method. I guess I'm just struggling to see how he's limited to being able to get access to his water on his property because of a gate on somebody else's property.
Well, it's actually a gate that would impact his easement because he has a historic use onto that property that his property's always enjoyed the benefit of.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have just a quick question. Ms. McHugh, how, how would Mr. Miller's neighbors access their, you know, the back lots behind their, their living, the lot where they, where their current residence is?
I don't represent the other three homeowners, but I have, I did ask that question of my client and at the homeowners meeting. And my understanding is some of them actually do use that same, that same route to occasionally go back and access it, but their, their lateral, their water from the Karnes lateral is underneath and in a ditch. I think a couple of them are actually here tonight to talk about that, but, but they have used it in the past, is my understanding, but not frequently and all the time like my client does because it butts right there and his barn is right next to that particular roadway or pathway.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh.
But it doesn't cut off total access.
Correct. He still has the ability on the, if you drive, I don't know if you've driven out there, but if you drive out there, my client's property, house faces east, so faces Dunwoody Court, and it's the side, so he still can get up his driveway to his house. He just isn't able to get any equipment if he needs to around at the back of the house.
And I, I guess, Mr. Miller, I, I think he and the other property owners, the three to the south of him, had just approved through the subdivision, splitting off and, and saying that those would be separate lots. Is, is that correct? Am I remembering that correct?
Madam Mayor, you are correct. My understanding is the homeowners association has approved that and they're just now gathering signatures, but that is in fact true. And for the record, those homeowners, and I did try to read all, listen to all the hearings and understand all the requirements, but specifically did propose to this, to the proposed subdivision that they just move one of their streets so that it was between their, the back of their lots and so that those houses in the proposed subdivision faced a different way. And then everybody would have had a street that would access all the lots without having to impact those four homeowners' ability to divide those four lots. But that was rejected.
Yeah, because they'll have to figure out how to get a road to those four lots if they just split those off.
Correct. Which is, one of the things that would be helpful is if the, if the, if you think about it, the city of Meridian wants to have orderly development, but what essentially is going to happen is those, those four lots would have to then have four different little side streets to get to the back of their lots if they're developed. And that impacts, you know, what kind of emergency equipment can get back on those four little, those four little side streets if those lots are developed. But again, I think with just some minor modifications, it could be a significant impact in a positive way for the Dunwoody Court residents and my client and a minimal impact to the subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Cindy Breckel. Cindy?
Can I give my three minutes to my husband? Can I add the yes?
No, you, you each get three, so. But, but I, I think that was an awesome idea. It just doesn't work that way.
He's a lot more eloquent and nicer than I am. I get right to the point.
Well, that's really nice of you.
Okay, I'm Cindy Breckel. I live at 5960 North Rothmans Avenue, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you, Cindy.
And I would like to start with something that we all agreed to when we mentioned the flag salute and justice for all. That means Bristol Heights and Dunwoody and all of the other subdivisions. Everything that I hear tonight so far is Dunwoody residents feel that they are entitled. I live in Bristol Heights. We're not asking for paved roads, sidewalks, this and that. According to what the H, ACHD said, they do have eight foot of safety. It can either be eight foot on one side or four foot on each side. This shouldn't be just about pacifying them. It should be about, I'm a little nervous, sorry. It should be about being able to space out all of the traffic because we are going to be hit with a lot of extra traffic, even though there's only, I don't know, 44 homes or something that are going to be built. It's still going to affect our area. Barclay, it's going to all filter in through there. And I feel that we shouldn't just be limited to worrying about Dunwoody's nice yards and fancy streets and quiet drives. It's not about that. I also wanted to mention that, let's see, that the current and future traffic status of Eagle Road and Shindon are going to require a lot of congestion and they're going to be heavily traveled. The, by opening up the Dunwoody and not letting them have their way with their roads, it's going to be able to put the traffic through different ways so that the people that live in the new neighborhoods will be able to access, depending on where they're going to go, if they need to go out. I'm, I'm not real familiar with all of the different roads. I haven't lived here that long. But in order for the, the new residents to go out to whatever roads they want to, we need to have the access. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Well, I think that's about it. I have a lot more to say, but I, I'd rather give it to my husband to speak, but... Does anybody have any questions?
We appreciate your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Jackson is next.
Well, we're looking forward to your eloquence.
That's a tall order.
You know, it's very, it's very nice your wife speaks so highly of you. So if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Dick Jackson, 5960 North Rothmans Avenue, Bristol Heights, Boise. In addressing this matter, I think it's very important for everyone to recognize that they had easy access to recognizing that there was going to be some development at this location. Here was this large parcel of ground, six streets being stubbed into it, and everybody that lives around there had that opportunity to see that something was going to happen to this agricultural piece of ground at some point in time. So none of us are exempt from assuming some responsibility for the changes that are about to occur. The Dunwoody residents certainly have a valid concern for, for safety with their nonexistent walking and biking accommodations at this time as well as the street lighting. However, those of us who bought properties in adjoining subdivisions undertook that responsibility by purchasing properties where some of the value of that property was attributed to sidewalks, paths, biking paths, and street lights. The Dunwoody residents had that same opportunity to bear some financial responsibility. And it's, it's apparent from what has been mentioned tonight that they're reluctant to get seriously involved in bearing their responsibility. I commend Bill for his work with the highway department and that's making a great advancement to address those needs in a most practical way. The burden of providing access to this new residential area should not be imposed strictly upon one area such as Barclay's. Eagle Road and Shindon are at gridlock. The Meridian paper addressed this with a front page article just a couple of weeks ago. Public services need more than one point of access. Emergency vehicles, if they're restricted to only one location, are going to have a difficult time responding during major parts of the morning and afternoon. Meridian has experienced a tremendous growth, commendable growth, and it's no longer a bedroom community. It's a community where, such as the residents that will live in this area, need to have access to the Southwest for employment, access to schools, and retail shopping. The area needs more than one point of connectivity and preferably more than two. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your testimony.
Madam Mayor, next is Ben Tippett.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Be happy to. Benjamin Tippett, 1938 East Dunwoody Court, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor and city, members of the city council, I'm Ben Tippett. I have been asked to represent the Dunwoody neighborhood tonight.
Okay, so we'll give you 10 minutes.
I hope to not take all of it. So as you know, in, on June 25th, our previous meeting, there were serious safety concerns expressed by everybody involved in concerned, in concerning Dunwoody Court as an ingress and egress access to Three Corners Ranch. The developer had recommended stripes along the side of the roads and no parking signs. As you indicated, that was insufficient. That wasn't, that wasn't considered to be safe. So we were tasked by you as a city council to meet as a neighborhood and to meet, to meet with the developer, to come up with productive deliberation, I think is what you said. So we did just that. We met as a neighborhood and we talked about all the issues from, from the very least to the very most and what would make our Dunwoody safe. We talked, we talked about what would make Dunwoody safe and that would require separation of vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic. We came to what we felt was the reasonable middle ground. And that wasn't just our thoughts that we grabbed out of the air. This is from national standards. It's from the U.S. Department of Transportation. It's the precedence that's been set by previous neighborhoods that have faced similar issues within the city of Meridian. And as we go from a standard rural road to what functionally is an urban road, we feel that safety measures are important. And what we agreed upon was we had to separate vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic and that would require a sidewalk. So we reached out to the developer and we had a meeting. And as Mr. Conger said earlier, we, he eloquently outlined his proposal, which was stripes along the sides of the roads, signs. I was going to say two to four lights, but he said three lights. And landscape changes. Now, of course, we felt this was inadequate, as you have felt previously. This would effectually reduce the travel width of our road between 19 and 22 feet, which would be insufficient, and it would not separate vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic. So we felt it was inadequate. We presented our own plan, which included sidewalks, and we were met with resistance. There was no compromise. There was nothing, there was no give and take. The developer insisted that he would, he wanted to continue with his original plan of stripes along the side of the roads, signs, lights, and landscape changes. So tonight, as I come before you, I regret to report that we were unsuccessful in coming up with an agreement on what it means to have a safe street for everybody involved, not just the members of Dunwoody Court, it's for all those members that will, all those people that will access this street, including those that live in the new neighborhood. But I will say that safety is our, of utmost concern and we will not compromise on safety. If Dunwoody Court cannot or will not be improved to make it safe, we have no choice. Another option needs to be pursued. So inclusion, in conclusion tonight, I've had a lot of thoughts. The last three weeks, I've, I've missed a lot of sleep thinking about this. And I have dozens of thoughts that I'd like to point out and to say to you tonight, but I'm going to spare you in sake of time. But the time has come. The time has come to make a decision. And we put our faith and our trust in you as the elected members of the city council of Meridian to make the best decision. Now, as you deliberate tonight, if you have any further questions or reasonable proposals, we're open to those. And I'm willing to come back and answer any further questions that you might have as you do so. Thank you. I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Burnt?
Thank you, Mr. Tippett. I appreciate your, your words this evening. I got a question for you. Do you feel like you, let me back up. I was, I was the council member that challenged you and the developer to get... you and the developer to get together to have productive conversation.
Right.
It seems to me, and I could be completely wrong, so please feel free to let me know if I'm, if I am, if I'm off-base by any means.
Okay.
But it seems to me that there wasn't productive deliberation between you and the, and the applicant.
That's probably true. And I, and I think it's...
Mr. Tippett, two minutes ago, you just said that there was.
Oh, sorry. Can you restate your question for me?
My question to you is, and this is really important, not only with this application, but past applications and with future applications.
Right.
The result of deliberate conversations always happen, mostly happen, when two parties meet in the middle and have conversation. That's politics, that's life, that's you and your wife.
Sure.
Am I off-base?
No, you're not.
Okay. So, am I, am I, am I wrong to say that that did not take place between you and the applicant?
In our meeting, it was cordial. We discussed several things. We felt like we came with a reasonable plan, and we felt like the plan that the developer came forward with is very similar to the plan that was, was put forth on June 25th, that was felt to be inadequate. Now, we didn't ask for the sun, the moon, and the stars, we don't ask to have our, the Dunwoody Court be brought to the same level of Barclay, or of the Vienna Woods neighborhood, or the Three Corners neighborhood, but we do feel like it is of utmost importance to separate vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic. We asked the developer to come forward with a new proposal, and they didn't, they politely declined to do so. Now, I, I am willing to, to compromise. I mean, my, my stand is not 100% firm, and you need to know that, but I will not compromise on basic safety. There, there is a, there's a figurative hill that we need to die on, and that figurative hill is safety. Can I give you a personal example?
Absolutely.
I have a six-year-old. She's developmentally appropriate, but in, at times, she's a bit of a hooligan, as all good six-year-olds are.
All good six-year-olds are.
I see some of you have six-year-olds. And sometimes she walks down the street to, to see her friends, and I worry about her. I worry about her on her street right now, that I have to tell her, "You have to walk on the very side of the street, and if a car comes, what do you do?" I worry about her now, and if this development comes in and no street improvements are made, I don't know that I can let her go down the street by herself. Now, I don't send her down at midnight in a, in a blinding snowstorm, I send her down at 3:00 in the afternoon, but I still worry about her. This is not an octogenarian neighborhood, we don't how, we don't all have the perspective of a 35-year-old that knows how to get out of the, the street in a specific situation, or even on the side of the street. She has a six-year-old perspective, which is developmentally appropriate. There's always going to be children, there's going to be children that access this street from other places. The hill that we have to die on tonight is the hill of safety, and that's been, that has been said by many, by the members of the council, by the police department, the fire department, everybody involved. The hill that we have to die on is safety tonight, and so that's why I put it in your hands, with that faith and trust that you're going to make the right decision.
Madam Mayor, follow-up please. Mr. Tippett, as a father, as a City Council member, I think that we're in agreement. I don't think there's a person in this room that would disagree with your last statement, for sure. You spoke earlier about a compromise, are you in a position, you know, in your representation of your HOA, or your subdivision, to speak about a compromise?
Yes, I am.
Okay. What would that be?
A stripe down the side of the road is not safe. What prevents a driver from driving over this, over a stripe? There's nothing. The, the concrete or asphalt barrier is not an option. What other options do we have? We have a sidewalk, and that's what we proposed. Now, I've, I have been authorized by our neighborhood as a spokesman to compromise, and I'm willing to compromise. Does it have to be curb, gutter, sidewalk, in a standard-length street with streetlights and everything else? No, it doesn't. But it has to separate vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic, there has to be an improvement made to this road to make it safe. It's a standard rural road at the moment, and it's going to become an urban road with the amount of traffic. I know, I understand that we're not going to have 5,000 trips a day go down this street, but we're going to have significantly more than we have right now, and it has to be As I've reviewed, as I've reviewed the federal standards, the state standards, the city standards, it requires separation of vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic. I'm, I'm open to suggestions also. My thought, and as an expert in public health, that a sidewalk is required on this road to make it safe.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, a few things. You're the first that said, "We're not asking for the same standard that Bristol and Vienna have." Everything that we've heard from everybody has been, "That's exactly what we're demanding." You talk about the, the hill that you have to die on and won't compromise on is safety, you say that, what's to stop somebody from crossing a painted line? What's to stop somebody from crossing a curb and a sidewalk? If, if there's no level of, of what is an acceptable level of danger, then why not demand a steel and concrete 10-foot wall to separate traffic from the sidewalk, or from, from the walking area? Well, that wouldn't make any sense, because that would be cost prohibitive.
That would be superfluous.
That's a big word for me, but...
It means excessive.
Yeah, it wouldn't make any sense. So is rebuilding this road. You say that it doesn't meet federal standards. Well, according to, to what your assumption of, of the level of traffic may be, we have, we have traffic standards, we have an organization that determines what is to be required, and they've said that the road provides ample infrastructure to be able to handle the traffic that would be added to by this additional development. We rely so heavily on experts in their field. ACHD is the expert, they are the ones that own, maintain, and approve, and what makes sense, what's going to be a road. So, we have to take the emotion out of it, otherwise, we would require, if we have absolutely no chance of, of having vehicles be able to access pedestrian traffic, we would require 10-foot steel and concrete walls to separate them everywhere, but that doesn't make sense because there has to be a level of danger that is an acceptable range, and that standard has been set, and I think it's, it's this council's job to decide if the application is legal and makes sense. To me, what's being proposed to us is, is below the density that they would even have to apply for, and that just sets that, that standard, that the road that exists now, is even more capable of handling the traffic that it has now and is being proposed. So, we can keep going through everybody and having all, the, the emotional testimony about, you know, we can't, we can't compromise on any level of safety except, well, we're okay to compromise to a level of safety of having a sidewalk, even though a car could still access it.
You are correct.
I don't know where we go from here, unless we all just want to make everybody happy so we're just going to talk about it all night, but the reality is, this fits within all of the code that, that is there. Where do we go from here? You don't want to pay for it, you want the developer to pay for an expansion of your road. You're not even in the city. So if, if it were to be built today in the city, your subdivision, we would require a different level of infrastructure to be built, but you're built in the county with standards that exist today, I just don't know where, where we need to go now.
So, there is an inherent level of danger in whatever we do. As I walk out of this building tonight, there's nothing to prevent me from getting hit on a sidewalk by someone who chooses to drive on a sidewalk, and that's true. There's, you, you can't build a 10-foot concrete barrier to separate vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic because that would be excessive, and I, I completely agree that. But, there has to be a certain standard of safety, and what the United States and the state of Idaho and the city of Meridian has set is for an urban road that standard is a sidewalk. I don't feel like I'm answering your question very well, and I apologize for that.
Madam Mayor, and to be fair, I guess I didn't ask...
Oh, okay.
Really a question.
I was wondering...
You made a very good attempt at trying to respond to my rambling of frustration because there, there is a standard, there is a standard for safety, and that standard is more than adequately met with the existing infrastructure. I'm happy to be here all night, I've done it many times, and, and listen to everybody and hear everything, and my mind has been changed from time to time, from, from what initially thoughts that I've had, but I, I don't see us getting anywhere because your neighborhood is not willing to pay for the expansion to your road, and it's adequate for what's being proposed. So I don't think it's our, our job to, to require somebody else to improve an off-site project that every government entity has said it's good to go.
I would say that there are available options that do have all of those safety standards that are already met, that are not being accessed currently. That could be used.
I, since you're the spokesperson for the HOA, do you feel that you went into the negotiations, and I know that Mr. Burnt asked this, but when you start the meeting saying, "We've taken a vote and this is what we want," do you think that sets the tone for a negotiation?
Uh, can I, Madam, Madam Mayor, I apologize for not addressing you correctly tonight.
That's all right. I've been called all kinds of things.
So have I.
Usually on Nextdoor. Fortunately, I can't see most of it.
I'd, I'd like to, to take a bit different perspective. When we entered that meeting, I allowed Mr. Conger to present his whole plan, uninterrupted. I don't know that we came in with guns ablazing and making a firm stand from the very beginning. I, we went in with, with the thought that we were going to have a productive discussion. When, when Mr. Conger made his entire presentation, it sounded very similar to what was discussed here back on June 25th, and we felt that that was inadequate. We did meet as a neighborhood, we, we met and we felt like that was, that was the minimum standard, the, the middle, the middle ground. We're not asking for lights a, as would be, as would be required by the city of Meridian. We're not asking for, for everything, but we're asking for essential safety features. And so after Mr. Conger, to answer your question, after Mr. Conger presented his, his entire presentation, including all of his, his suggestions, I provided all my suggestions. It was not contentious in any way, at least I didn't feel it was contentious in any way. So I, I felt that we went in with the thought that we're willing to compromise if there's room to compromise, and we, we felt that there wasn't. We were, the chiasm that separated our two proposals was very wide, and the developer was unwilling and unable to make any concessions from what he had originally proposed, and we felt that we were coming in with a reasonable, with a reasonable plan, and we were met with resistance. That's how I would describe it.
But you felt having curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides of the, the road was a reasonable plan for a gated community with 44 homes. You do know what that development could be.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, I guess when we continued this, we really thought there would be a coming to the middle of the developer and the neighborhood to, to look at the safety issue. And, you know, whether it's a detached sidewalk and this, and the subdivision said on the south side, because there's three properties in common area, we'll do a detached sidewalk. You don't need curb, gutter, and sidewalk, or curb, gutter, and, and a, a complete street. You can have a detachment to it, but I guess those are the kind of things that we had hoped that would be discussed. It does seem like everyone went to their, the line they drew, and, and that, no conversation was had.
Now, Madam Mayor, you make an excellent point about having a detached sidewalk on one side of the street. If push comes to shove, we would be willing to accept that.
Unfortunately, I'm not a neighbor and I'm not the developer, I'm just...
Right.
A presider of a, I don't even have a vote, so...
Sure you do.
Anyway, I, I, I guess it just, you can't get a tie here. I, I don't know. We're, we're not going to solve it in a public hearing. We, I guess we had hoped that there would be better dialogue and, and some, some recognition. I think safety is paramount as well, but your subdivision approved four new lots, and I don't, I didn't hear what additional traffic that those would add, and you haven't even asked for a stripe on your road. So, I, I'm trying to be sympathetic to what, what the neighbors are saying on Dunwoody, but I'll go back to the testimony on Bristol Heights, is they're, they're really accepting the, the larger percentage of what most of the traffic direction will be going to, and they have curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and that's what they bought into, but you still don't have a whole lot of traffic, and you had a developer that was sensitive to building a gated community so you would not carry the brunt of not just this development, but every connected development within that. There needs to be some acknowledgement to that and some common ground in finding something to mitigate a lower impact than what you could have otherwise.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I don't want to be misunderstood. Within the boundaries of the proposed Three Corners Ranch, I think it looks good. I like the development. I, the, the private, the private gated neighborhood, it's very nice, they're, they're large lots. It's going to be a very nice neighborhood, I'm sure my new best friend's going to live back there. I like it. That's not my opposition. My opposition is not the neighborhood itself, it's the ingress and egress and how it's being used.
And that's our interest, too.
So, Madam Mayor...
So, we have common goals.
We do. Madam Mayor, yes, we do. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we leave it in your hands. Do the right thing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Appreciate your testimony both three weeks ago and tonight. You testified three weeks ago, you were pretty adamant that, you know, no sidewalks, not even, the neighborhood didn't want to have any participation in the sidewalks, not even the land, if I recall, was part of your testimony. Sounds like that the neighborhood stance has changed. I'm curious if, if the HOA has had a conversation about having a fiduciary role in the creation of potentially a, a detached sidewalk.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, can you define fiduciary?
Are you willing to help pay for it? In, 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 Madam Mayor, sorry. The reason why I ask is that your testimony earlier tonight led me to believe that, in your opinion, your street is already unsafe, as is. If you believe that your street is already unsafe, well then, wouldn't you, as a representative of your neighborhood, want to do something to address that?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Kavner, I worry about our street, I do, absolutely. Do I, do I feel that there are safety improvements that need to be implemented? Absolutely. I'm one member of 14 or 15, and I recognize that. There's been lots of different opinions that have been expressed. This, using this street as an, as an ingress and egress is going to change the nature of our street. We're, I mean, we're, I think we're unanimously opposed to using the street as it, as it currently is, or with suboptimal or minimal safety standards applied. So that's why we are, we're taking a fairly firm stance on separating traffic. Am I willing to, to put... Am I willing to put together a committee to pay for stripes? Yes, absolutely. I think no parking signs would be nice, and we're probably willing to pay for that, too. I can't speak for everyone, because we have not discussed that specifically. But am I personally? Yeah.
Madam Mayor, and I guess I really echo the mayor's comments. This medium is not the place for neighborly discussions. This should have happened between you and the applicant three weeks ago, because there's lots of possibilities, possibilities that could have been embedded and discussed neighborly, that's just not happening here. It's frustrating for me as a council member that we're now wrestling with this, and it sounds, the way things played out the way they did, is just, there's a lot to be desired. I'm disappointed for our community.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have two more sign-ins. First is Jeff Johnson.
Hi, you.
And your final is Jeanette Johnson.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jeanette Johnson. My address is 7905 West Colt Drive, Boise, Idaho. And, Madam Mayor and council members, I appreciate you listening this evening. I'm here to represent Mark Miller also, and I'll just take the three minutes. One of the reasons I'm here is that I have a company called Irrigation Consulting Services. He contacted me when the Karnes Lateral signed a license agreement for the lateral to be piped. That license agreement is only good for the portion of the lateral that's theirs, not the portion of the lateral that's on his private property. They cannot sign a license agreement for his property. That's against the law. He has contacted Bryce Ferris, which I believe you guys have a letter from him. He also has his own attorney now, who he has brought on board. So, there is a requirement that Mr. Conger will need to have a license agreement with Mr. Miller for that section that is on his property. If Mr. Miller chooses not to pipe that, then he will not pipe that. If he chooses not to move the ditch, then the ditch will not be moved, because the Karnes Lateral cannot dictate on someone's private property, okay? The other thing is, Idaho code is very, very clear that water must be unimpeded and flow at the same rate after work is completed. That is very, very clear. They are proposing a two-inch hole for Mr. Miller. Basically, they've said, "Here's a two-inch hole, you hook your water back up." The other thing, water flow must connect the upstream and the downstream ends, the work area and the property to the ditch, pipe, or headgate at the other facility, and must be the same size of specification as the existing facility. That's part of the Idaho code. They are proposing to leave him that two-inch pipe and said to him, and this is in their plans, "You need to hook this back up yourself." No, that's not the way it works. They are required by law to replace exactly, or better, what was there. The proposal of a two-inch pipe doesn't work. What needs to be replaced also, his ability to get to water, get to his irrigation water, they have not given him, or even in their proposal, there's nothing, as was stated by his attorney, for him to even have access to a gate. That's not giving him access to the water, okay?
You'll need to summarize.
Okay. If they don't move the water, then they will not move the gate, then he would not have access to his irrigation water, okay? So, and that's, in the letter, and I will make this very, very brief, from Heath Clark, it states that the final construction plans must be approved by the Karnes Lateral. They can only approve the plans as far as their part of the lateral. The other part that goes across the property would need to be approved by Mr. Miller. They can only approve the section that's theirs. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for you. Don't you think Mr. Miller could access his water through his own property?
Not if the gate isn't in the right place. He doesn't have access to that property because of the way his property sits and the way the barn sits on his property. He doesn't, isn't going to have access because of the gate. So, or if he needed to get equipment, as was stated by his attorney, because of the road and the gate, there isn't a way to access that water if they don't set it up correctly. So, and then also grandfather rights in accessing water. There is a grandfather law with water. If he's accessed that right for a period of time, he has the right to access that water, they have to prove, or have to allow him to access water that way.
And that is one of our, that's an ordinance in the city of Meridian, that they cannot impede the delivery of water, and that is to be between the property owners and the irrigation district or the Karnes Lateral district. That is all worked out in advance. Those rights cannot be impeded on.
Correct.
And this developer deals with irrigation.
Right. We've dealt with them, yeah, many, many times. I deal with them on a regular basis, right? And that, this has to be taken care of in all of it, and all of the people on, all those properties are in the same situation, right?
Well, they just have to make sure the delivery is to that.
Correct.
And then they need to ensure that it continues.
Correct. And that they, that it's set, it's as was or better. They can't just hook it up and say, "You guys fix it and do it yourself." It has to be set up so that they can, they have their water delivery. If that means putting in a new box the way it was, or whatever, that's how it has to be, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And is there any one else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further sign-ups?
That was the last of those indicating they wish to speak on the check box.
Okay. Did I see a hand up? Yes, please. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Darren Jurgensmeyer, I'm from 1778 East Dunwoody Court. Thank you for your time. I'll try and be brief. Some of the comments that have been made were that this application has been passed by the previous commissions. It has, this application has not been wholly supported by the previous commissions. The first commission meeting with ACHD, three of the council members there voiced strong concerns about it. Their discussion was cut short by the votes of the other members. The Planning and Zoning Commission, if you listened to that meeting, after an hour or so of public open debate, they requested the changes, including that north exit and entrance to Three Corners Ranch, which the developer is trying to discuss further today. And they also requested that the safety measures be changed on Dunwoody Court, and those were, they also required that we meet with the developers to discuss this. It wasn't a flat support of this application. And when you look at these stipulations, every commission has said, you know, that Dunwoody needs to have some changes to be safe. And as Madam Mayor has eloquently mentioned tonight, this road was rural and is now becoming urban. If, as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, this is to meet the standards, if you look at the chart that Mr. Clark provided tonight, the rural required no sidewalks. However, the next level up from a rural road becoming urban required five-foot sidewalks. So now that this is becoming a rural into an urban road, it doesn't meet the standard. The ACHD in their initial report said Dunwoody needs no, requires no improvements. However, now after discussion, they say, oh, well, now it requires an eight-foot section or two four-foot sections, which would then leave 21 feet of roadway. We are not requesting to be up to the standard of the neighborhood surrounding us, which has wide roadways, six-foot sidewalks, et cetera. We're just requesting something safe. If the developer had mentioned to us, hey, you know, how about in a detached sidewalk, the fiduciary responsibility on our side or the financial support of that would be the donation of our property, so that their residents in Three Corners Ranch could use that sidewalk to access the school bus. Their children are going to need to come through the sidewalk through Dunwoody as well to access the school buses, because it doesn't come into the neighborhood. Also, that north exit, so the Planning and Zoning recommended that north exit after that deliberation. One of the main reasons was because without it, it would leave an 82-home cul-de-sac, which, as Mr. Parsons mentioned, is against the rules, against the law. The Planning and Zoning said, "If they added that north exit, would that meet the rules?" And Mr. Parsons said, "By the letter of the law, probably, but something else should be done to do it properly."
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you, and I agree with you on the donation of the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Any other, yes. I assume you are with the Karnes Lateral.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming up and testifying. If you'll please state your name and address.
Steve Swick, I'm 6065 North Karen Drive in Meridian.
Thank you.
So I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything.
Can you just pull that a little?
Of course.
Thank you.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything formal prepared, just a couple of comments on the Mr. Miller property from Karnes Lateral. Ms. Johnson stated that we're only giving him two-inch pipe access. That's currently how he accesses the water now. I have a photo of his pipe and everything going into the, into the lateral to get water. That's what he accesses now, that's what we're providing him with. Mr. Tibbetts has a 12-inch pipe that comes from this area to his property. We're piping him with 12 inches, or the group is. So they're going to be hooked up with their current pipes, size, dimensions, that's what we're giving them. That's what we agreed to give them through the developer. So if he wants a four-inch pipe, then he would have to add a four-inch pipe. He actually draws water from the main Karnes Lateral. He doesn't have his own lateral. So when she said that the lateral's on his property, I'm not sure what she's speaking of there, but like I said, I have a photo of his pipe going into the Karnes Lateral is where he draws water. We, like I said, we've worked with the group to go through and make sure all of our customers have water as they do now. These two are the ones, the main ones that came up that had issues. The headgate that they're putting in is half on Mr. Miller's property, and I believe half is on Mr. Dean's property. They're looking to relocate that five feet, which would take it off of Mr. Miller's property. And if I misspeak on any of this, I'm going to have the developer correct anything I say, but I've got a lot of information that I may not have totally accurate. But the goal is to move it, and then they will add the four or five feet of two-inch pipe that would reconnect Mr. Miller's pipe into the lateral. And they've agreed to do that. I have an email with that in writing, so. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Come on up.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Lindsay Heiner, 1778 East Dunwoody Court.
Thank you.
I just want to give my own personal perspective as far as our road as it currently is. We did have a meeting after the Planning and Zoning Commission. They asked us to meet together with the developer, and we had an initial meeting with Mr. Clark and Mr. Lopez at the tennis courts. And it started at 6:00, and, you know, there's this discussion back and forth with this, with the developer in our neighborhood and talking, and is it safe, is it not? Mrs. Dean was there, and her opinion, it wasn't safe. Marcel's opinion was, he, his quote was, "We don't disagree on safety." Meaning, you know, we're all agreeing that there's some safety concern here. And I pointed out to Mr. Clark that 42 minutes into the meeting, so it's 6:42, only two cars had passed. So that's this, as it currently was, that's kind of our neighborhood, just to give you kind of an insight. You know, I bought, I personally bought the house. An emotional reason is that it didn't have sidewalks. Honestly, like, that's one of the things, because I grew up on a road that was in the country. So for me, that's the neighborhood that we, you know, we bought into, and there's two cars passing within 42 minutes. So now we're changing it to a lot more traffic, and I have yet to see the source of the traffic study. I would like that. They say that 30% will come through Dunwoody and 70% through Bristol Heights. If anyone looks at the map, though, you can see this is a nice, straight, direct pathway to Locust Grove, and so I personally don't agree with 30%. I think it's going to be much, much higher. So when Mr. Conger comes in and says, "We're going to provide no parking signs, and we're going to have no sidewalks, and you can't even park on the street, and now we're having a lot of people coming through," this starts to feel like it's now, it's not even a neighborhood street. It's now like kind of a highway, because you can't even park on the side. It just feels, it feels like fundamentally different than it currently is. In regards to the sidewalk, I know I have a short time. An adjacent sidewalk right to the street doesn't impact the neighbors as much, and that's what the discussion has been. In regards to a detached sidewalk, there probably needs to be some discussion, because the neighbors coming right in, the zuches, right off of Locust Grove, are not part of our HOA, and we're not involved in those discussions. So there needs to be some understanding that that is their property with large trees, and I don't like to infringe on other individuals' property or rights. So I just think that that needs to be taken into account. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Tyler Lewis, 6059 North Karen Drive, Meridian. I'm going to kind of show you, again, Ben couldn't be here tonight, so just want to speak on behalf of kind of the Shandy Street, which is also kind of part of this development, but not as prominent, because it's not the new traffic, but it is taking additional traffic because of the Three Corners current neighborhood that will access through there. So the biggest deal is there, I think Three Corners is 48 houses. This road here now will connect Three Corners to Shandy Drive. Shandy Drive is actually a 27-foot road with no improvements. The neighbors have, we've talked, we don't have HOAs. We try to meet with a lot of the members of the neighborhood. We've met on that piece. We understand that we're only at least owning 48 of the homes. That's why, I guess, you haven't seen us in front of you asking for a ton of improvements on that road. It's 27-foot, with the average house setback being about 32 feet on those one-acre parcels, because it was built in 1962. So it just brings, not to overcomplicate the issue, but it brings back up to the same point as everybody owning in this piece. If we're going to start off-site improvements in other areas for what we're calling rural roads, it's no different than 48 homes for this Shandy Drive that would be a rural road. That's why we haven't come in and asked for it, because we know that the impact is reduced in the amount of traffic that we could be getting with the development, and that's where we're trying to work as the partner piece. So that is all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for joining us. I think I saw you at a City 101.
Yeah, definitely.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Remington Sealy. I live at 676 East Idaho Avenue, and I'd like to just add to the sidewalks and safety. So important thing to consider when, with the proposal of sidewalks, is that no matter the cost, as Mr. Tibbetts stated earlier, we should die on the hill for the safety of our children and the people who live in that area. What's important to consider here is that just as the police department is willing to spend $25,000 on the drone that could possibly save one life, I would also say that those in the neighborhood should also consider to spend that money. that those in the neighborhood should also consider to spend that much money to have the possibility to save a life, to protect a life. I know that from living in a rural area, that without sidewalks, it was really hard for me when I was young, too younger at least, to understand, you know, like, where I should cross the road. Sidewalks are important. They do provide a guideline and a structure, and not only for the children, but also for the drivers. It's a deterrent. It's a lot easier to see a sidewalk than just a line, and definitely to notice it when you're driving. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you. And you live in an area without sidewalks, or not very many, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Real quick, please tell me we haven't spent $25,000 on a drone.
He attended the City 101 and did talk to the drone operator, so.
So we did spend $25,000?
I believe it is. Yes.
Wow, I want that drone. Hi, my name's Tori Lewis. I live at 6060 Sweet Valley Avenue. I live in the new subdivision, which were being impacted with Guinness being connected into us.
And on east, east, west, north?
It'd be the north side.
North side. Thank you.
I lived in Dunwoody for 14 years. I raised five kids on that road. I never saw near the problems they portrayed. It seems to me this is one of those examples of, don't, you know, build my backyard type of thing. Like, all the safety things, they keep coming up. I had five kids. The bus came into our subdivision. They just had to have a bull-nose bus, and it circled in and out, and then they made them go to the street. But we always had a stripe on the road. The kids were informed they had to walk in the stripe. But all the safety things I keep hearing just amazes me because I don't know how my five kids lasted 14 years, so anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Thank you for joining us.
Ron Santos, 14474 West Barclay Street in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for deliberating and taking a lot of time to review this development. Also thank developers, too, for working with our subdivision.
If you can move a look, thank you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to request for the operation of the gates to address the safety concerns of cut-through traffic is to somehow provide a vehicle or means to keep that gate closed in a normal state of operation. So meaning that once the development is occupied, those gates stay closed, and the only way to get in is to access with a code or remote. So it doesn't stay open and reduces the cut-through traffic, whether it be from Bristol Heights or Dunwoody. And that's all I'm requesting.
Thank you. That's a very legitimate concern.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Did you have a, you wrote in, right?
Yes, I did.
And you had, was it construction traffic as well?
Yes.
Was that your construction traffic question? Or you had a concern with-
Just a concern of traffic, construction traffic accessing Bristol Heights, and how that was going to play out. And that was just in the letter.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any other testimony?
I'm Lori Lewis, and I reside at 2,000 East Dunwoody.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us today. I just have to ask, I mean, this is really, really, really concerning to me because I've known, we have, me and my husband, we've lived on Dunwoody for 27 years. We know the Deans. They're friends of ours, or have been. Hopefully, they'll still be our friends after this. Our parts of our family, even Tori, who just came up and talked to my kids, you know, I grew up, I raised my kids on Dunwoody. It was never unsafe. Well, heck, that, I mean, Vienna Woods wasn't there, Bristol Heights wasn't there, Three Corners wasn't, it was a whole different context. The context has changed now. And now, and so what I want to know is, who is the authority in our government that says, that determines what is safe and what's not for our people? I just don't, I don't even know who it is. ACHD, you ask them to make a decision. If this, if these were together, what would you do? And they, they wouldn't answer the question. No one is answering the question. No one wants to. And so I'm just like, who owns that? I just, who owns it? I mean, even you, Ty, said that, that if this were a Meridian subdivision, you would have different, different standards. So I, I'm just trying to understand. I know this is weird and complicated because we've got a Meridian subdivision going through a non-Meridian subdivision, and, you know, going from one type to another. It's just, and, and I just want to know who's going to decide and make sure that the kids of not just our subdivision, but the new ones. We're the only ones talking about the new, the people in the new subdivision and the safety of those kids. Who's going to make sure that they're okay?
Certainly the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
I'll tackle that for you if you want, briefly. It's not an answer you like, but it might help. So the entire problem is the disconnect in the two land use agencies, which decided these projects next to each other. So you've got the county that approved Dunwoody Court, and it did so without applying this to-and-through concept, where you're going to require that project to provide the infrastructure necessary not only for itself, but also the capacity to serve what will become future projects all around it. It's some of the reason why you see our water sewer lines sized a certain way, much larger than the actual project needs, because everyone helps each other out and provides capacity to serve all of the future development. That opportunity was missed in this context when the county didn't require this project, Dunwoody, to provide infrastructure that would serve not only that small development, but what would inevitably come, which includes this. So that ship has sailed, and that land use agency's decided it. Dunwoody's complete, which is fine. The problem comes now when this project, this different land use agency, and there now has to be, what you saw in some of the earlier presentation, this concept called nexus and proportionality. So now, this land use agency doesn't have the legal means, in this case, in this context, and in any other time when you've got competing land use approvals, it doesn't have the authority to lawfully require this project, for example, to spend money off-site in an unlimited fashion, even if that would be the most safe solution, because the law then requires there to be some nexus and proportionality. So instead of requiring Dunwoody to have, back then, installed large sidewalks and the infrastructure necessary for the whole region, now we're much more limited, and some of the obligations that this project, that can be imposed upon this project, are much more limited, because now it has to be proportional to the impact created by this project, which is why I think some of the discussion has gone from doing nothing off-site to where this project has talked about streetlights, some signage, some striping, far less than what ultimately probably would have been required, and should have been required when Dunwoody was approved, but much less than what, than the public clearly wants. So that's what happened. I think that's what got us here. So now, we're constrained, and our lawful ability to say this project not only has to do what it needs here within the city, but also expend funds to a certain degree to improve off-site, we've got limitations on our ability to do it. Does that make sense? It's not an answer to that.
It does, but it doesn't make sense. What you're saying makes sense. I understand what you're saying, but it makes no sense whatsoever. I mean, it just, it's, because it's a lot of bureaucratic red tape that's keeping people from doing the right thing. And it just, and there's, so at the end of the day, I mean, so did it start with ACHDs, their recommendation? Is that where it started, that where it was off and they should have recommended? Or could they not have? I mean, where is the accountability?
Unfortunately, you get into should've, would've, could've. We've been asking the county for years to adopt our city standards in their county developments that we will someday abut to, and they didn't. They, and as elected officials, they had that right to. We don't agree with it, but this scenario plays out around our community. This is not the first time we've faced this hill. And this is not the first time this developer has faced this hill either, and he has worked with the subdivision, the county sub, in trying to make it safe, because it has to be safe for theirs, too. But it also has to pencil out. And in order to get complete streets, you're going to have much greater density, and you probably won't have a gated community. So there has to be some give and take, because as Councilman Borton said, we can't necessarily require this, but we don't necessarily have to approve it. But beware, if this isn't approved, you don't know what the next application will be. And we're trying to find that happy medium. And so it is a balancing act. And I think 10 years ago, Councilman Charlie Roundtree said, "I think we've done our job if everyone is angry at us when they walk out of this room." You know, it seems silly to say that, but in some regards, that's the compromise that we look for, is everyone has to find that middle ground.
So do you think that we've, I mean, do you think we've found the middle ground? I mean, even in the, and it wasn't-
We had hoped that you all would find the middle ground before you got here tonight.
Before we got here.
Yeah.
So. And it's too late to do that? Is it too late to change that? I mean, middle ground isn't, I mean, isn't, either, right now, they're like this. There's neither one is at a middle ground, right? I mean, don't you agree that it's like this?
It's-
She got it.
Ma'am, Lori.
Yeah, well, I have to go sit down?
No, but yeah.
Thank you.
She's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Bergstrand, and I live on 1970 Dunwoody. And I think I have more questions than a testimony here. So my question, when we discuss and the safety, understand the limitations that we have here. So the question is, why if there are other avenues that meet the standards, that meet and have everything already in place, with no investment, no more money, why are not being used? Why they have to pass the traffic, only two gates open when there is five points connectivity at pile level? You don't have that situation in many places. It is a gated community. It's not going to be crossing. Let's make more options for the people on Dunwoody. If we go to the no parking signs, so what is going to be the parents that drive the kids to the bus station? Are they going to park on Locust Grove? Where are they going to park? They have, it's about one-third of a mile from the new subdivision to Locust Grove. So what is going to happen in the morning commute? Kids walking, where are the schools? Southwest. Where are the young drivers going to rock it? Through Dunwoody. Where are the kids riding bikes to Heritage? Dunwoody. Where are the kids walking to take the bus? Locust Grove, Dunwoody. Where are the parents going to do? Peach black, maybe three lights now, better. So where are they going to park when waiting for the kids to load the bus? Where? Locust Grove? Where are they going to go? So then we're going to have all combinations, kids walking, riding bikes, no sidewalks. You add wintertime, dark, if there is snow in the ground, we hear from ACHD, they don't plow that street, so the snow is going to be there. There is no sidewalks for us to shovel. And at the beginning, we were not asking for sidewalks. We like the neighborhood, but what we are asking, the considerations, is what are the options that there are on the table? Why has to be that plan? We were not opposed to the neighborhood. We love our neighbors. Our kids go to Ambrose, and they cross to Three Corners because it's safer. I don't want my kids walking to Locust Grove. I don't want my kids walking all the windy in the dark. My youngest used to send in this scooter with a headlamp. I would open the window and see that light floating because I couldn't see anymore. That's what we have, and we like it. We like it, but I want the consideration of what are the options? What are really the options that are making sense here? So more questions, that answers, and thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Any other, any further testimony?
Madam Mayor, my members of the council, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, and I'll try to fly through a couple rebuttal points and see where we end up. So one question that was asked by Mr. Santos was about the gates, and as we'd mentioned, the gates will be key-carded, so they will generally be closed, but they will be accessible to emergency service providers. And as we'd mentioned in prior hearings, all of the pedestrian facilities are fully publicly accessible, so that will continue to be the case.
Well, I'm thrilled to hear you have key cards, not key codes.
I think there will be the ability also to dial in if you're a visitor, so that will, that will allow for folks to be able to get in.
Because we have one of those brewing right now.
We do.
That's really fun.
Very exciting. Okay, so with regard to some of Mr. Miller's concerns, as Mr. Swick stated, we will provide a pipe that meets and matches his current connection point. We will satisfy Idaho law. We are very used to working with the lateral companies, working on license agreements with them. We will fully adhere to all of Idaho's laws requirements.
And those water entities are really good at making sure you are good, and so is our staff, so.
That is, might be the understatement of the night. They're also good at making you, make sure their attorney gets paid, so that helps. With regard to the access questions, Mr. Miller will have access to the lateral from his property. It is accessible to him from his property. I want to make a distinction there, however. The access from outside of his property has been permissive over time. There is not an easement right, there's not a prescriptive right. He will be able to access it from his property. Access from outside of his property is a private matter between private citizens. It's not a matter for you all to adjudicate. I am surprised to hear about the Dunwoody residents wanting to allow development on the backside of those, what were previously called open space lots on their plat. As was discussed at the last hearing, this was a non-farm subdivision. It had a restriction on development of those properties. They had to be in common ownership. If the CCNRs are changing, you know, what we're looking at is, I think, about 12 additional homes, and a couple of those lots are pretty big, so the traffic, it begs the question of why that traffic's okay when this traffic is not. But beyond that, there's not an obligation to provide development access by this property to non-farm, non-development lots. As Bill described during the last hearing, generally when you guys annex properties, they would provide sewer and water from the front side of the lots and then be accessed through common driveways. That is not disorderly development. That is standard operating procedure for infill like that. Okay, so turning to the Dunwoody subdivision element, I do want to emphasize that that subdivision was approved 30 years ago, and it was approved with the anticipation that this project would have come along later. So my glass is a little bit different than yours, Councilmember Borton, respectfully, from the perspective of it was done with a stud- was done with a stub to this project, and it was done according to ACHD standards that continue to be satisfied 30 years later. Now, we recognize the to and through question, and that's why we've done the gated scenario here, to try to limit the number of, of homes that would take access along Dunwoody Court. And we think that that is a huge concession. That's a huge item that I think everyone should acknowledge, because 98% of developers would have come into this and more than doubled the density that we're talking about, and would have opened every access point. And that would have been significantly more traffic for the Dunwoody residents than what is being proposed tonight. Now, the Dunwoody residents have insisted on sidewalks. I do want to just clarify that you, you'll recall that our initial conversations were that we had started at no improvements, because that's what ACHD had said, was no improvements on Dunwoody were required. We've met, Marcel and I met with the Dunwoody folks. At that point, we discussed painting, we discussed the no parking signs, and we also offered up volunteer efforts by, by Marcel to help the Dunwoody residents try to find funding sources if they really did want, want sidewalk. Now, that, that was the initial movement. And then we came after listening to the council, we came to the next meeting, and we said, in addition to that, okay, we'll throw up some, some, some streetlights, and we'll do the other items that have been identified on that summary that I've provided to all of you. Jim Conger's priced that out. That's, you know, $30,000, $40,000 worth of improvements for a roadway that ACHD says doesn't require any improvements. So we think we have been trying to come to the middle. The, the chasm to jump from what we've proposed, which we think is significant, to a sidewalk, however, is a horse of a different color, because as we've explained, installing a sidewalk requires a road rebuild, because it requires a redo, a redo of the drainage system. So let me, I just want to wrap up with a, a couple comments along those lines. So there is a standard of safety. ACHD has established that standard of safety. There are 16 homes on Dunwoody today. When this project is built out, assuming about 30% are going out this direction, that means about 13 homes worth of traffic. We're talking about 29 homes on Dunwoody Court. That's all. We are not talking about a highway. We are talking about a low-volume, low-traffic roadway with only, at only about 14% capacity at full build-out. So what is reasonable for what happens at Dunwoody? It has been established by ACHD standards. ACHD developed those policies over decades, and we've adhered to them with this application. ACHD is, has confirmed that tonight. They confirmed it through the emails. They confirmed it through their commission. And Bill also summarized it through his comments. So with that, I would just ask for council's approval of this, and I would also point you back to the modifications that we requested to Planning and Zoning's recommendation of approval, and I ask that you consider that in connection with your motion tonight, and happy to answer any follow-up questions that you might have.
Okay, council questions? Doesn't look like they have any.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any further information needed from staff, the applicant, or any of those that testified? Before I ask if you would like to close the public hearing, I'd ask for discussion first. Just in case.
Smart.
Let me get the conditions here.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavener.
Another body's probably kind of collecting their thoughts, reading their notes. I'm happy to start. I think I'm going to be, I'm supportive of the, of the application as presented. I think the, the biggest challenge is probably the one that clearly everyone in the room has wrestled with, I'm sure that you are all wrestling with, and it's that topic around safety, because, we don't like to admit it, safety is somewhat subjective. Councilmember Palmer wants to build a wall, and ACHD says, ACHD says, status quo is acceptable. And I think we, as elected officials, rely on subject matter experts like ACHD, but we also represent our citizens, even if they don't live in the city. So I'm sure many of you are trying to struggle with what is appropriate. Candidly, it's frustrating to hear that the Highway District won't let us do this raised curb. I think that would solve a lot of our problems, but I understand their operational resistance to that. It's a missed opportunity. I think if, if, if there would have been more neighborly conversations, there might have been other options presented. This isn't the vehicle to negotiate this or that, or up or down. So I'm supportive of, of the lights. I'm supportive of an, of an eight-foot stripe. And I, I'll yield, yield to what ACHD would support, but I'm in favor of, our, our neighbors to the east have colored designations for bicyclists in downtown Boise. If we could do some type of color designation to make it stand out more, I'd be more comfortable with that. Be really encouraging for the developer to work with the neighbors about the blind spots. One person's blind spot is another resident's lifelong tree, and we want to make sure that we're sensitive to, to that particular piece. I'm, I'm supportive of, of removing the, the north-south connection. It just goes back to, if this was a different use, this was a much larger use, I wouldn't be there. But it's a small use, good lots. And I think I said this three weeks ago, this is a good infill project. And we, for those of you that don't get it, do this each week, we often, at the council, will talk about creativity. And oftentimes, you don't see a lot of creative projects. And I think this is a creative approach to address the needs of the entire surrounding neighborhoods, to minimize cut-through traffic, and to bring forth the best possible project, really at the lowest possible density. So I support it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Mayor.
Miss Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think we're trying to find it really quick, but when I was pulling up the minutes of the previous meeting, the way I read it, we had already addressed the north-south connection, and it was included in the motion. As Bill asked for clarification, and it was all included, since it was not part of the discussion.
Since? Reiterate it just for the sake.
It's at the bottom of page 62 in the council minutes. And I don't know who would get to address that.
Bill.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Mayor.
Bill will.
There was no condition stricken from the staff report. My clarification was whether or not the council wanted to see a revised plan that showed the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. That sub-street, that north-south connection, was part of their recommendation. So this body instructed the applicant, again, to come forward this evening to talk about irrigation, a revised plat. They've made those changes as part of that discussion at the previous meeting three weeks ago. It's still within your purview to strike that condition if, if you choose to do, do so.
Lieutenants, I, I guess we've asked from our road authority about safety, but certainly sometimes we find ourselves in disagreement on a safety issue when it comes to personal safety and the safety off the street. Could you maybe weigh in on what your observations are?
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, sidewalks are obviously going to be better. That's why we require them in the city. This is a unique situation. You have a county road sandwiched between two, well, one will be part of Meridian, one is part of Meridian or we're responsible for Locust Grove. You know, it really comes down to the volume of traffic on that roadway, the behavior of the drivers. Oftentimes, the traffic, oftentimes the traffic complaints that we deal with, we get a complaint from a neighbor on speed or those kinds of things. And it's their neighbors that are the problem. That's just how it is. It's, it's the people that live in those subdivisions that drive those roads. This would obviously be a new subdivision attached to an old subdivision connecting to other subdivisions. So I guess to sum up, you know, a sidewalk would be better, but it doesn't, it's not going to prohibit anything from happening necessarily, because, you know, cars leave the roadway all the time for all kinds of reasons. So I think it's better. That's why engineers came up with that idea whenever, but there is no way to totally make that roadway safe and, and free everybody from any kind of danger. I, I don't know if that helps at all. We would certainly, you know, if this is approved, be driving down Dunwoody to access that neighborhood, to patrol it or respond to calls and that kind of thing.
Great, you're adding to the traffic on that road.
Yes, we would. But a marked patrol car is generally a good thing. Generally.
Generally. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Where do I start? Where do I start? I'm generally in support of this application. I, I think that it's a great infill project. I do believe that this is a perfect example of when two parties come together and, and aren't able to negotiate an equitable agreement. That's the reason why I adamantly challenged the homeowners and the applicant to get, to get together to discuss this. This isn't the first time we've had this discussion. It's not the first time I've yelled at Justin, you know, on the public record. I understand that there's, there's, we're in a unique situation with the different governing bodies who take care of the roads, and we have, we have the county, and we have the different, you know, different municipalities with their, with our laws and ordinances and code. It, it makes it difficult. And with that said, that's the reason why I, I, I was very clear, crystal clear, in saying that I wanted you guys to get together to come up with an equitable plan. You didn't, and here we are. So don't point the finger at us. I was very clear when, when I, I, I said this, or, you know, a couple of weeks ago. I don't mean to be, I don't normally speak this way in the public record, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sort of disappointed with how this process has played out. I know that the resident, I know some of the residents that live over in that area, very smart, educated, very deliberate people. And I just, this is not the place to negotiate. We can't, you know, have the, the applicant come up and have a representative from the HUA to come up and, and negotiate on the public record. That's not how it works, unfortunately. So with that said, I, I believe the developer is, is doing more than what he needs to do. And I, I wish we could, as a body, make it so that there would be a sidewalk or a pathway along Dunwoody Court. Unfortunately, we're not able to, to enforce that, because it's an off, it's an offside improvement. And so it just makes it difficult.
Any other comments? Miss Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, it's interesting trying to resolve something that was created with information from 30-plus years ago regarding Dunwoody Court, and something brand-new today. We've got different information and dealing with two different entities, the county and what the city now requires. And the opportunity to resolve it was outside of this body, and unfortunately, that time has passed. And so I appreciate the things that the developer has come up with to voluntarily do to help mitigate safety issues on the road. And I appreciate this is, I think it's a great infill project, and hopefully, as time goes by, things will be peaceful, and the traffic won't be as bad as some people anticipated being. And then it will all be a great situation in the long run. But I think it's a really good project, and our hands are pretty much tied in doing anything regarding mitigating anything on Dunwoody. And appreciate what the developer is willing to do, and I think we should move ahead with it. I guess with that, I can put it in the form of a motion, unless we've got some other council that would like to weigh in.
Want to close the public hearing?
That would be great. Madam Mayor, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Since some of us have talked about it, I'm also in favor of removing the requirement to, for the north-south connection. I think with the, how little traffic is going to make it that way, we'd rather not that traffic be going up to Chindon anyway, if they're going to access Chindon. They need to do it through the proper route of connecting to the arterial and then connecting to the state highway, through either-
Through to Locust Grove.
Through to Locust Grove, or make their way out to Eagle Road. Madam Mayor, I was giving-
Mr. Palmer.
I was giving Anna a chance to make the motion if she still wanted to, but it's all good to do it. I move that we approve H. 2019-0006 with the requested waiver to allow the irrigation easements within the buildable lots, and deleting the condition requiring the north-south connection, and adding conditions that the three new streetlights, the striping as proposed with the eight-foot section on the south side of the, of Dunwoody, and no parking signage be added, and the mitigation of the vegetation within ACHD's right-of-way sightline as proposed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? What did you say about the parking signs?
Right, Madam Mayor, it's like no parking as far as-
Oh.
I thought the same thing.
I thought he said, no parking signs.
Madam Mayor, that the signs that say no parking, you're required to be installed, not, no parking signs.
I knew what you meant.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavener.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
All ayes, most carried. I'm going to call a 10-minute break. I'm going to call a 10-minute break.
Thanks.
Okay, I will reconvene this meeting and we will move like lightning speed to 7F. Public hearing continued from June 18th on H 2018-0117. And I will ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item is the Oaks North and South MDA. This project's actually been continued three different times. It was continued from February, June, or April, June, and then now we finally got the revised plans. I think last city council, the last time we asked for a continuance, the applicant withdrew a portion of the application and we asked for some time so that we could revise this staff report to reflect those changes with the acknowledgement of that withdrawal. And so that's why we're here before you this evening. So this site consists of 357 acres. This property was annexed and zoned in 2008 and then later and subject to a development agreement. And then later in 2013, it came back through with some rezones and Plomeray Plats for what, and it changed from Oak Creek to the Oaks North and Oaks South Development. It was a master planned community that consisted of office, future Ward Park. It had three multifamily developments as part of it, and then a mixture of R4 and R8 lots on both the north and south sides of McMillan Road. Since this development, a lot has changed. So currently, the Oaks South portion, which is the graphic on the right-hand side, is currently, is the property that's controlled by Coleman or Toll Brothers, that's currently built out. So all of those phases are built out. Where you see the multifamily development, the park, and the office lot, and the future fire station lots, all of that property was removed in 2017 and developed as the Oaks West Development. So that developer bought that from Coleman. Tom Senior developed the Oaks West Development. And so that area was extracted for the purpose of entering into their own development agreement. So it's no longer subject to this particular DA. And so even though the next application is just for a minor, a small subdivision, there's a lot of provisions that are no longer relevant to this particular property because of what's transpired from 2008 to 2013 to ultimately to what we're discussing today. So there was a lot of analysis in the staff report going back and forth with the changes and why we felt there should be more open space added with the Oaks Development. But again, the council gave us latitude. We went back and modified the staff report to reflect that. So currently, in the recorded development agreement, this is what's tied as a conceptual plan for the Oaks Development. And so because of the continuance, the applicant was able to provide staff with a revised concept plan. You can see here that the northeast corner of the section, which is also proposed as Oakwood subdivision, has been incorporated. And because the Oakwind subdivision that was withdrawn a few weeks ago has been removed, the applicant's gone ahead and put back the R15 piece and a multifamily development, or some type of cluster development's going to go on this particular property. Those details are to be worked out. If you had a chance to read to the staff report, you'd also noted that staff had some concerns and so did the Planning and Zoning Commission have concerns with the amount of open space for this particular development. Again, this was a master planned community. The multifamily developments typically have their own amenities and own open space. So we were concerned that we were giving up density and increasing the number of single-family lots, which would inherently impact the amenities approved for the development. And so the applicant, based on some feedback that they received from the Planning and Zoning Commission, actually came to the table with the DA modification and then gave us those greater details for how that 5.65 acre central neighborhood park would develop. And you can see here, there's a lot happening here. Large clubhouse, a larger pool, the irrigation pond would be a fishing pond, recreational amenity, and then there'd be bocce ball courts, tot lots. So they've come with a plan to really beef up the amenity package for that central open space. And as I get into my presentation for the next hearing item, they've also, you can see in the concept plan here with the Oakmore Development, they've added some more open space and a tot lot is another amenity. So the applicant heard what staff had said. The applicant heard what the Planning and Zoning Commission heard as part of the subdivision approvals. And so they've definitely stepped up to the table and added a greater amenity package for this particular subdivision. Now, I would mention to you that this exhibit here in the lower right-hand corner is not tied to the development agreement, but in the staff report, staff is recommending that this be included as an exhibit in the amended DA so that we make sure that the applicant constructs what is being shared with you this evening. As I alluded to in the staff report, once the Oaks North Development is built out, there will be approximately 668 single-family homes just on the north side of the road alone, and there's over 300 lots on the south side. So this is, we're talking some substantial units out here using amenities and using open space. That's why staff and the commission felt it was so important to get those details for you. So with that, I think the applicant, in the staff report, we made those modifications, removed all the references to the park, to the office lots, to the fire station lots, just basically cleaning up, tying the applicant to this revised concept plan, holding them to this central open space and 5.6 acre park with amenities showing before you this evening. The applicant seems to be in agreement with the staff report, and I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
So Bill, what is the percentage of open space now? I don't see that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe at the time that Oaks came through, I believe that section was approximately 14 percent. There's a lot of integrated connected pathways. There's parkways throughout detached sidewalk and parkways. There's multiple pocket parks throughout the development that you see here. And of course-
And they're pocket parks, not retainage?
Yeah, to my knowledge, they aren't drainage. They are pocket parks. And then right through the center of the development here is the crease and lateral that they're going to approve with a multi-use pathway and tie into the adjacent subdivision for interconnectivity. So again, our concern was the level and the amount of amenities that we are losing with the number of units that we're, the number of single-family homes that are being added to this development. Again, with multifamily developments, there's different standards for open space and amenities based on the number of units. So we felt comfortable with that when it was master planned, that we were going to get additional open space and amenities. But when you take that component away, we have to make sure what you add back, it's still consistent with the code and their DA. And so the applicants provided all those calcs to us, and that's why we scrutinize this. So I applaud the applicant working with us and bringing back something that where staff's comfort level is a little bit, is put at ease. We're comfortable with the open space and the amenity package for the proposed, at least the Oaks North portion of the development. Oaks South, again, is all developed out at this point. So really, no concept plan or changes to that, the south side of the road.
Thank you, Bill.
Any questions for staff? Becky. You know how to clear a room.
Didn't know it was me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario. As Bill indicated, we have worked with staff on kind of updating that development agreement that was dated. We did provide the staff with an update of our open space and amenities. And I worked with Stephanie and provided her the exhibit that's before you this evening that shows all of the amenities that are going to, that we are going to construct within our central common area. And so that, we will have a recreational building clubhouse that will have a great room, storage, seating areas, double-sided fireplace. They're going to have covered picnic areas. They're going to have, I think they have some, what is it, cornhole games. They're going to have multi-use court for pickleball. They're going to have a fishing pier, pathways, swimming pools, cabanas, very extensive, high-end package that Toll Brothers has planned. Definitely an upgrade from what we initially had as far as our conceptual amenity plan. And so I think, you know, I'll just finish it that, you know, this is a continuation of that project that's taken many years, and we have three phases under construction. And when they can't build it fast enough, that's how fast they're selling. So I'd ask the council support the development agreement modification to update it to match what we have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Counsel, any questions? Chris, any signups?
None for this project.
Okay. Is there any testimony?
I have a question of curiosity.
If you'll please come to the podium. We figured you were here for one of these items. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Randy Worrell, and I live at 4647 North Dale.
Thank you, Randy.
I live in the Oaks. So that's why I'm here. I'm looking, I was concerned because in the past, the R15 zoning on either end of McMillan and Black Cat, McMillan and McDermott, my concern was how that might impact our neighborhood, property values, traffic, overall security in the area. And I see that here, it looks like they've reverted back to the gray area on the map, to what originally was high-density housing. Could that be changed as they build out? As they build out, could they opt to say, okay, let's have that be single home, single-family home? Is that possible, or is it now set in stone that that's going to be high-density housing over here on McDermott near Black, McMillan?
Yeah, that area would come back for a public hearing.
Oh, it would?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good peace of mind on that one. On the other end, too, it looks like they've already changed zoning to R4, which is good peace of mind. So that's all. I just wanted to see how it was playing out.
Thank you.
It looks like it's going to be a really nice subdivision up there. The one that they have south of McMillan is really nice. We enjoy it a lot.
Well, good. Well, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
And you can always talk to Becky after, afterwards. She's a fountain of information. Well, seeing absolutely no one else, Becky, do you have any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Miss Little Roberts.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Miss Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve H 2018-0117.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the request for development agreement modification. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Borton.
Bill, does the staff report already reference these, the concept plan that's before us right now? Or do we need to add that as a condition to include the DA to have this concept plan?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Borton, the DA, the amended DA provisions, proposed DA provisions incorporate these as exhibits. And I'd also let you know that the central amenity that you see here before you has also been, as part of the DA provisions to be installed with the first phase. So as Becky mentioned to you, they have three phases going out there. So we want to make sure to get this in place sooner than later. So we've made those adjustments, and again, she's in agreement with those changes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anything further? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item G is a public hearing continued from June 18th on H 2018-0118. I will ask for staff comments.
Mayor, members of the council, this one coincides with the previous action you just took on, but this is the Oakmore subdivision. This is a rezone on the Plomeray plat. The site consists of seven acres of land. It's currently zoned R15, and it's located near the intersection of West Gondola Drive and North Black Cat Road. We have subdivisions primarily surrounding the proposed development, which are R4 or R8. And so you'd have Westbridge subdivision to the north, and then Black Cat to the east, Jump Creek subdivision to the south, and then future phases of Oaks North to the west. Again, same history as last time. This was annexed in 2008. At that time, it was just a bubble plan. And again, 2013, they came back through, subdivided this. Rec had a concept plan that showed multifamily on the site. And so the applicant's here this evening to rezone it from R15 to R4 and change the development plan from multifamily to single-family of a Plomeray plat that consists of 18 single-family residential lots, and lot sizes ranging from 9,500 square feet all the way up to 1,500 square feet in size. Again, here's the proposed plat on the right hand of your, side of your screen. During the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, staff raised some concerns about open space and how this was going to tie into the overall Oaks development. So the applicant has revised the plat since the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have rerouted the common drive to meet not only UDC standards but fire department requirements, not to exceed 150 feet. Commission made a recommendation that they extend the open space to the west and included another amenity, which the applicant has. Staff also recommended that the applicant add a 10-foot multi-use pathway along North, or North Black Cat Road, which is the street buffer along that street, which is incorporated. And then also with the Oaks, the Jump Creek project to the south of this project, we had a pedestrian access stub into this property, and they're extending that and tying into that subdivision. So we're getting interconnectivity, not only with open space in the adjacent subdivision, but also with pathways. So we're starting to make those nexus and getting those connections throughout this area of Meridian. There is only one outstanding issue for the council tonight, and that's really, there's the west half lateral that runs through the property. I know the Jump Creek project had a common lot. If you can see my cursor somewhere in this area here, you can see on this colored graphic that it comes into the site. Right across this, comes through this common lot and then dives across lot three here, block one. I would appreciate, and staff's recommended, that the applicant just explain how they're going to route that, whether it's going to be an easement on the buildable lot or a separate common lot, and how that's going to tie into what Jump Creek for you this evening, get some details on that as you guys make a motion on this particular project. So testifying, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with conditions. Becky was the only one that testified on the application. There was no one else that was there to testify. As I mentioned to you, open space and amenities were a concern along with the common driveway. Again, the applicant has revised the plat to coincide with some of the discussions that occurred at the commission hearing. Staff, there has been no written testimony since the P&amp;Z commission hearing, so it's a pretty straightforward application. Staff and the commission are recommending approval for you this evening, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Bill.
Counsel, any questions?
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario, Meridian, representing Toll Brothers on this application. So basically, what's before you this evening is a downzone. The property was zoned R15. We initially anticipated it would be multifamily with 60 dwelling units. We are asking to downzone it to R4 and have 18 lots, single-family, and those sizes range from 9,500 square feet to 15,000 square feet with an average of about 11,495 square feet. At the Plan Zoning Commission, Bill, can you put up, there we go. At the Plan Zoning Commission, one of their concerns was since this L piece is pretty far removed from the central open space, they wanted to make sure that we provided for some type of activity for the residents that we are going to have here. So we added some open space and we put a playground here, which satisfied the Plan Zoning Commission. They were happy with that. Secondly, the fire department, the way we had this arranged, our common drive exceeded the 150 limit. So we kind of rearranged the lots, and now it is in compliance. The west half lateral comes through, kind of arcs through the property right through here. We have been coordinating with the Westbridge engineer and Jump Creek engineer. So I have a stub street here that will connect to the north, a stub street that connects to the south, aligns with their stub streets. And then we show, we'll pick up that lateral, and we pipe it along the rear and then up here. And it would go out that direction. So there's just a short stretch that'll be piped along the rear of these buildable lots, but then it'll go into common lots and exit where it historically exited. As Bill indicated, the Parks Department asked that we build a 10-foot multi-use pathway along Black Cat. We are in agreement with that. The, this particular piece of property sewers to the east out to Black Cat. So we will have a sewer main line that comes here. I show a pedestrian pathway and landscaping over the top of that where we'll have the sewer connection. So it's kind of a dual purpose. What's before you is 2.44 dwelling units per acre, so it's low density. The reason that we deferred this application for considerable amount of time is Toll Brothers was taking another look at this R15 property. They were initially going to go with single-family dwellings and downzone this to R8, and then they decided that they want to do something like an auto cord or a Mew type design. And so they decided to keep the R15 intact. So that's, that's kind of why, why we continued to ask for deferrals. And I've been working on that design for them.
And you'll bring it back at some later date.
I believe we have a condition in our development agreement, Madam Mayor, that says anything within the R15 areas has to come back as a conditional use permit. Is that not correct, Bill? I think that's in there.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know if that's exactly the case, but it says if it's multifamily, it's coming back for a conditional use permit. But if they do something like-
Auto cord?
Auto cord or something, that's single-family, maybe a DA mod or may. So we'll have to look at that. But I know the DA does say it has to be densities between eight to 15 dwelling units to the acre on the site, if I remember correctly.
Yes, and I, I believe, Bill, our target, Madam Mayor, Bill, our target is eight dwelling units per acre. But they would be detached dwellings.
Okay, any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public testimony? We don't hear downzone very often, so. Awesome.
Madam Mayor, Becky just testified, and members of the council, Becky just testified that that easement would run along those buildable lots. So as you know, if it's an easement greater than 10 feet, we, we need to have a waiver for that to happen to go across those two lots. So if you're inclined to go with that in, as part of her testimony, then I'd ask that you include that as a condition of approval or grant the waiver, and we'll make it happen.
Okay, anything further from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on item 7G.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing on item 7G. All those in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H 2018-0118 with the waiver for the easements on the lots that Bill mentioned.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item 7G. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Any items under eight? And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.